Ready to get started. First item up is our Chamber report to Troy.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still falling for that mute thing. Three years on with Zoom. Okay. I'm gonna share screen. I want to share with you something, a fun little trend we've been noticing this this fall, sharing with you the footfall counts. This is October 22 versus 23 on the left in the dark. And the fun little trend I'm talking about is our footfall counts in the valleys, meaning weekdays, consistently have been doing better. And we've been also hearing that feedback from, or from Walkabout Grill, Rinehouse, Icicle, Munchen House, that they saw through October, the lead up to the weekends were doing a lot better, even though the weekends may have been consistent on the last two weekends of October, you can see were greater than the previous year. And then to the right is November, and that carried on into November, where we see the first weekend did great. But again, the the weekdays, the valleys in between continued to outperform the previous year and has been a nice little trend that we've seen this fall. Let's see, the, the big thing for us right now, of course, is Christmas Town. And I was gonna share screen again. This is much better to look at. And that is our website just got updated. Christmas Town, the gazebo, Christmas Town, the Fest Hall, the schedules are up and we've been in pretty consistent. So it's easy on consumers, but Mondays through Thursdays, the fun thing we can always say is there's always live music. Because even on Mondays through Thursdays in the month of December, between our, more than the month of December, between Black Friday and Christmas Eve, we will have Christmas carolers downtown. Weekends, we have live music in the gazebo, as you know. Returning this year again will be the Sugarplums, that three, the trio pictured here that we've had for the last couple of years. Another fun thing, I'm going to scroll down and show you that the Christmas Holiday Concert, November 25th at 7:00 PM, that's a pre-concert. Features are many of our local talented musicians and all of those who collaborated on the music video that they did a couple of years ago, Merry Christmas from Leavenworth. If you haven't seen it, I promise you it will give you tingles up and down your arm. It's fantastic. And then another fun addition, late in the, in the month on December 22nd, December 23rd, we are welcoming back Manuela Horn and her Sleigh Bells. And they will be performing some family-friendly concerts on that Friday and Saturday. The Saturday will be a little extra special because we will also be doing Spice Blue Vine in the, in the Fest Hall, as long as our liquor permit comes through. And so those are some of the new things for, for this, for this Christmas Town. And then also we had applications open for the Christmas Town ambassadors. And these are awarded to five groups that help us cover these dates and work for a week. And I'm happy to report, we had five applicants and they picked five different weekends. So first weekend, we have Marlin Handbell Ringers, then we have, I think, Lions Club, followed by Rotary. And then we have the Royal Bavarians and finishing out the last week will be the Cascade Education Foundation. All said, they will all raise about sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars for their, for those respective nonprofits. And that's all I have for you to update you with. I think maybe Kevin's in the crowd, so I might punt to Kevin to see if he has anything to add.
Well, just that our general membership meeting, it's not as glamorous as our spring celebration. We have the big show, the Indian, what do we call that, the big parties, but we have our general membership meetings at Bushland Beach, 1135 this Thursday. Check out just in social. Anything to add to that, Troy?
First drinks on Kevin.
All right, there you go.
And by Kevin, I mean the Chamber. But yeah. We've got that. And then on the horizon, we're going to have a very, very interesting, very fun, very, lots of exciting things coming in the New Year from the Chamber and our retreat is going to be in February 15th. We just solidified that today. So I can't wait to share some of this new stuff we got going on, but there will be some exciting stuff to share at the meeting on Thursday as well as into the New Year. So more to come there.
Great. Any questions? All right. Wonderful. Thank you again, as always.
All right. Thanks, everybody. I'm gonna get back to my puppy.
Thanks, Troy.
I'm good. Where are you going?
My wife and I got eaten after this.
Where?
Instead of our pool that we offer.
Publicly testify about it.
See ya.
First drinks on you, man.
He didn't say.
All right, the review of the 24 Planning Commission Docket. She disappeared. You thought she had longer.
She was wrong. She was wrong.
Well, I'm afraid if there's questions, a lot of them are Lilith's.
Hi, guys. Sorry, I had to step away. Have a few, a few challenges. Um, thank you for this opportunity to share with you the draft 2024 Planning Commission Docket. We do this every year. And if you recall, this meeting is to hear from you about ideas of what you might want the Planning Commission to look at next year, or you want the city council to consider rating for the work that they do next year. As you most likely recall, we'll compile the list and in early January, we'll send it out to you and the Planning Commission members. And you'll get to prioritize what you would like done. And we compile all of those for the group priority. And we'll have a discussion on that. So anything you'd like to add to the list, preferably a couple of you agree to it at least in the start, so we don't end up with such a long list of just individual ideas. But right now we have getting back to the urban growth area expansion, which we had hired a consultant for and started working with the county in 2020, 2021. That work went through a public survey. We have a draft of where we might put a boundary, but that boundary hasn't been sent out for public review yet. So that's where we were in that process that was put on hold. If you would like to get back to that, either as a planning commission item or just a staff direction, the consultants willing to do that. And I hopefully will meet with her for the first time this year, second time this year earlier in the year. But anyway, and we'll talk about some of that tomorrow. Then there have been changes in state law, particularly around housing requirements. So those are listed in the draft. Several council members talked about recreational consultant to define a level of service. So if that's still a priority, that is on the list. The Design Review Board has some jurisdiction in the multifamily zone. Maybe want to revisit that. That was a staff request from our previous planner, Maggie. We have some definite code cleanup. And so that is on the list. And then we have our prior docket items, which should be somewhat familiar to you, starting with cottage housing, which the Planning Commission talked about at the last two meetings that they have had. So I won't dig into the remainder of the list because it's all related to items you've seen before. But I open this time up for any comments, questions, or suggestions.
Lilith, where on this? We did talk about inclusionary policy at one point, didn't we? Is that on this list or is that not something they were considering?
That's something we were considering. Let me look and see where it was.
Thank you.
Probably on page two.
Okay, sorry, I missed it.
Number seven.
There it is.
There it is.
Looked it over too quickly. Thank you. And do we, would they ever consider a policy where, you know, a large development would have to put in some kind of city park or pathway, natural kind of thing? Or is that something? I've seen that in other cities. Where?
That's the level of service.
It is. Okay, for development.
Yeah, that's what recreation level is.
Oh, it's not general recreation, the entire?
It's a little bit of both. So you do analysis of what you have, you determine what you'd like. And that could help prioritize larger developments. And we do have the planned development code requirements that do require a certain level of open space if they do a planned unit development.
Okay, so the level of service for recreation that we're talking about is specifically for developers.
Yeah, it would, it would do both. It would define what we have and what the community wants. So it would look at all of our parks now and where we want to be. And then it would also provide, because we've defined the level, it provide a baseline for developers to meet or provide.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying. I'm sorry. I didn't get the, between the lines, understanding of that. You just gave me that. So thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
So the urban growth boundary then for expansion, are you getting asked by people to annex in?
Yes. Yeah, it's the gentleman who owns the property up near the water tower on Ski Hill. But historically, we went through, and I think it was before you were on the council tea board. We had a consultant hired. We've done public surveys. We had quite a really good feedback on where we could consider moving and where people didn't want to move. And the next stage was to produce a map that showed possible areas and then get more specific areas based on the survey and then get feedback on those.
So number nine, when it says to go to the water treatment plant, that's just a you're not talking about a water treatment plant all the way out the icicle line?
She was mentioning the, the water tower.
Tower, yeah. Yeah, but this is water treatment plant.
And if we, we do have an opportunity to annex the water treatment plant as a separate standalone area because it is an essential city service. So we could make it part of our UGA and then, and then zone it. And that way, anytime they needed any permitting done out there, it would be permitted through the city. So there's a lot of advantages to that.
Okay, but you're not, I mean, the way I read it was like one continuous
No.
Yeah, all the way up to the plant. Yeah, okay.
No.
This, this already has gone, we've already made this request to the county, right? For that one.
Not this one. Not this one, Mayor.
Not for the, not for the water treatment? I thought that was what we had gone to the county asking for.
No, not yet.
Do we own the land?
I believe so, yes.
Lilith, I guess I'd like to float an idea. My thinking is this, that we've done all this infill and density, we've done a 35-foot ridge cap. Has not resulted in anything close to affordable housing. And I know we need more further discussion on this, but I would like to consider making that ridge cap a 30-foot ridge gap instead of 35.
For heights of homes?
Yeah. Because I think, I say that because I'm walking around town, checking these things out. I feel like I feel like the light to the garden and the view that people have is a critical part. And I just don't see from my, yeah, I, I think that a 30, a 30, 30-foot ridge gap would serve as much function as a 35. You can still, you still build what you can build. Yeah, you don't have as much, but and I think there's further discussion needed for it, but I just wanted to put that out there because I think we've, we made all these changes and we haven't, we haven't gained a single unit that's affordable. And I understand about the dynamics and all that, but I'm wondering what, what it is we're sacrificing this stuff for. When we found out in the last 18 months, two years, we haven't, you know, it hasn't worked. So that's part of my thinking. So just to lay it out there for discussions. I know it probably impacts builders to a point, but I still think you can build. Majority of homes in this place were not 35 feet. They were 20 and 25 feet. So I think you can build a duplex at 30, 30 feet. So.
I think. I'm sorry, Mary. Mayor, I, I was just gonna say that I wrote that down. So.
Okay.
I think, I think whether, whether it's just that or the other, I guess it's all about making whatever those changes are that we are doing to try to get at more housing types is also the recognition of needing to fit into the neighborhoods. And that's what I think that's trying to get at.
Right.
The idea behind that middle housing is that you create more options, but you do it in a way that you know, it still seems to fit. And if, and if, and I know there's just a couple of examples that people just go to all the time of these are the kind of the draconian, you know, examples of what doesn't fit. But I think, I think whatever what we need to do is look at and I don't know, you know, I hate to say design standards, but there is some way of, of trying to help this process along and get further along that path of diversity by not standing out as a, like a sore thumb, that you still do it within the character of the neighborhood and what all that might entail. But I know, I know when you go to, you know, middle housing and conferences and everything, they're showing all the examples of things that can be done that don't look different, basically, that don't stand out so much as what we seem to have attracted. But anyway, so I think worth a discussion with it because one of the things I heard from the Planning Commission is there, they want to be sensitive to the neighborhoods as well.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, how do we accomplish that? We already
Residential, not multifamily.
In the character of the neighborhood. And we've let them happen. So how do we change what we're doing there so that we stay within the character of the neighborhood?
Right. Well, you can't undo them. You can't go forward. That's what you need to do is examine what, what those aspects are that would help us get to that point where those design standards are such that they do fit.
So do we have undesigned standards that don't fit, that don't fit? And those are what we need to fix? At least along with what we're doing? We don't get that Prospect Street, the, the big huge thing there, or we don't get the
Stafford.
Stafford Street with the big huge thing. So don't we have to find something to correct that so that doesn't continue? Maybe before we do some other things?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that that's what could be on the docket is looking at things that would help us to do that. That the planning commission could. But
Yeah, it's a real challenge, Council members, Mayor, to adopt a change. And it takes a long time before you see that change being used 90% of the time because builders are planning years in ahead typically of what they're going to be building. Those designs are done. The other thing to keep in mind is we can't turn this ship for housing and expect it all to look the same as it looks now. Holding to the old standards we've been living by has not yielded housing. So we did change and allowed zero lot line development. We allowed attached dwelling units, you know, the accessory dwelling units. The state law is actually changing to remove design requirements because they are cost impactive and they do reduce the opportunity for affordable units. You know, and the Planning Commission spent months analyzing height and slope and roof types. And it hasn't even been in effect one year. So I think it would be very disheartening for them to say, oh, we want you to look at it again because it's not where we wanted it. So I mean, I can put it on the list. We can talk about it again at our next opportunity with the draft docket. But I'd like you to consider reading those house bills and I can send them to you. So you can see where the state law is going. And continue to think outside the box if you really want to tackle the housing question. If we don't make our design standards something that the state within the state guidelines, then the state's going to direct it for us. So we, we have to have some changes in order to see a benefit. That's my soapbox.
Let me back. So if I've got a 35-foot ridge cap and my house burns down, I want to be able to replace what I've got. I don't want to have to replace something that's smaller. But if it's enacted, I can't replace what I've and I should get that consideration.
How many houses actually have that high of a ridge cap though?
I'll bet you I've got one. And probably three or four of my neighbors have.
Well, I would say you can make that consideration then, if originally that's not, I mean, there's things we can do here. I don't think I just toss this because I think we've already done the homework on ridge cap height. So if we change it to 30 instead of 35, it doesn't, I don't see how that is a huge, huge thing because we've already done the homework for 35. I do think it's worth consideration. And I think that we're talking about Leavenworth and you're talking about this residential section. And I think that it's been a, you know, it's an issue when you're taking away sunlight and you're taking away sunshine for gardens. You know, it might sound kind of colloquial, but I think it's, I think it's a critical thing. And so if you can give them something and still make your buildings, your duplexes, which you can at 30 feet, you can still do that. You know, I think it's worth, at least it's worth a discussion. So that was my point. So.
I struggle with supporting this topic just because the Planning Commission worked on this last year. And I think that there are higher priorities than discussing height again one year later. There's a lot of things on our docket that have been on there for years. And I think that they deserve a turn rather than going back and talking about height again.
Yeah, as Lilith said too, that we haven't really, we haven't seen the results of even lowering this, what we did. I mean, that compromise hasn't been in effect long enough to see any things develop with those.
Except that it's gone over 35.
Well, that was from before.
That was before the change the Planning Commission made last year.
That was before the compromise went into effect. Part of that what precipitated that.
I was thinking this after.
No, it was before.
There's a city, I know the city's never forced annexation and I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of it. But is that something that is being looked at or is that untouchable?
I don't know that we need to force an annexation. State law has changed to allow annexation to be an easier process, but I haven't dug into it yet. One of the benefits to the city for annexation is it changes some of our tax in revenue. On, and that would primarily be with the industrial area. The benefits for annexation to the residential is just being permitted through the city rather than the county. That's their primary benefit. A lot of properties in the urban growth area would also benefit from being able to annex and have sewer so they can, you know, develop their properties more intensely if they'd like. Not have to deal with septic systems. We do have a couple of properties who have asked about that to the west. Any case, so I put those together.
Wasn't what we call annexation thing put on pause because of the county? I mean, weren't we working with them on this before and then they kind of pulled the, they're in?
Mayor, I actually I actually put a stop on the urban growth area boundary because because this county appealed our work and, and we want to make sure we're on the same page. So when they appealed the R8 zone and we had a change of commissioners, I wanted to kind of step back and see where that appeal went, maybe even provide time to meet with the new commissioner and, you know, get some consensus on what we're doing and why we were looking at it. So now that that appeal process is done, it would be a, a good time to have those discussions, at least get the ball rolling.
Yeah. Approximately how many people are stuck mid-development because of that? Now, policy where they need septic and they can't develop? Because I know there's a handful of people up Ski Hill who were in mid-development and had to stop and have lost a lot of time and money and investment to, they're, they now are not getting permits because the, it changed, the permitting system changed for them.
That was a county decision and I'm not purview to the county permitting system. Or how many were in process? I've, I've heard from a few people. That's all I can say. I couldn't give you any guesstimate.
Yeah, that's interesting that they're stuck in that situation. And is there any way we can meet with the county and try to get that resolved to help them out? So a few have reached out to me as well. And they seem to be stuck in, in like a limbo where they can't do anything and they're losing money.
Yeah, I've sent an email responding to the county's questions about what adopted and what, what we could do. It turns out that the county was under the impression they adopted all of Title 14 and I thought that as well initially. But we have since clarified they opted one section. It's about two paragraphs long and it just talks about concurrency. It's a requirement of state law that development and concurrency happen together. And that's the section they ended up adopting.
And that was our language?
Yeah, they, they also have the same language in their codes. It's under state law requirement. But in any case, we are working on providing an updated code amendment to them.
And they're going to adopt it in a timeframe they've given for adopting that or?
We, we haven't been able to talk that through.
Well, thank you for presenting. I do appreciate that. Yeah, but it's, this is a big deal.
Thank you for your time.
We'll move on here. Again, the docket is still, you can send more suggestions in if you want, but this is part of the process again that will occur after the first of the year in furnace. But we just wanted to get it before you and get your nuisance going. But now we can move on to the review of the rate in P schedule.
Take the lead on?
Why don't you?
Sure. All right, Council, second version of redline changes. I don't believe there were a lot of additional changes in the front end under the development sections. Lilith, spark me if I'm wrong. From the previous version, but we have included all of the utility rates. So those are all in there. In addition, I provided you a handout. The PRSA met last week and they did make recommendation for increases. So the sheet in front of you with the last column, 2024, all in red. And they did make recommendation for increases. So the sheet in front of you with the last column twenty twenty four all in red. Those are their recommended changes. If you're okay with all of those, I'll incorporate those into this rate and fee schedule that hasn't been done yet. Now take a few minutes to talk about the pool.
Is that enough?
No. But they definitely didn't want to take this an opportunity to do some small cola increases to rates. Unfortunately, the bulk of. The fees. In the past was from the daily walk-ins. Since COVID with the limited opening. We turn away a lot of those folks because we give priority to season pass holders and PRSA members. So this will have some effect though, because we are increasing the um season pass rates. But it's not a big amount. Overall, all of these charges for services is about one third of the pool's total budget. Two thirds comes from the property taxes. So even just slight adjustments here could only be somewhere between ten and fifteen more thousand dollars. And we know that we dealt with a massive increase in wages. And the PRSA is going to look at that, of course, next spring and see what we have left over. And whether or not we can sustainably keep going with those types of wages. And if not, then we're gonna have to look at scheduling changes. So there's a lot of parameters to consider to balance the pool's budget.
Did they mention why they chose not to raise the non-resident season pass? Amounts?
Uh, I think it's because we bumped them up quite a bit in twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
And we didn't bump up the other fees. It's been like four years or something.
And he also didn't sell us.
We didn't sell a single outside.
Okay.
Really?
I thought we did a two, one or two.
You would know. I would not.
Oh, I think we did a couple, but not very many.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Unfortunately, Kelly was not at the meeting and you were not available, so.
Yeah, I think it's because we made a big increase in twenty between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three.
Yeah. So the board did hold the line on those particular ones. But the dailies they did increases. We did let some of those in.
We're trying to offset the significant wage increases. Yeah, I mean, that's just the way that.
Visitor use is the primary, would be the primary.
And there was also a desire to not go very high with seniors. The senior passes. And uh class lessons and credit lessons.
Chantel. Number thirteen, the excavation and grading film permit. It went from two hundred to twenty five bucks.
Where you at? You're on a page in the rate and fee schedule? I hear you say grading permit.
Number thirteen.
I think this would be yours.
Yeah, it should be two twenty five.
Two twenty five, not two hundred. Correct.
Is that on page thirteen?
No, on page.
Oh, no, oh. Page five.
Page five.
Because there's a lot of number thirteen in this document.
It's our page five, number thirteen. That should be two twenty five, is that?
Yes.
Manufacturer monitoring and instructor permit.
Excavation, grading and fill permit.
There we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, two twenty five.
Number thirteen.
Lilith, are you gonna make that correction?
Yes.
Yes.
And then residential pool, two twenty five from two fifty and went down twenty five. Is that correct? Right?
Yes, that is showing two fifty down to two twenty five.
Because we get a lot of those, right?
No.
It's good to dip out of it just till we get a fire. Okay, so two twenty five on that one.
Yeah, that's that's fine.
Okay.
Good catch, Steve Moore.
Yeah.
Thank you. We would have people just excavating for the fun of it.
I know. You couldn't afford not to.
We'd have built, we'd have pulled those thirty foot ridge caps about a thirty five.
Before I go on, one more additional one that is not in here. Are there any other questions or catches? That anyone noticed in the rest of the schedule?
I don't think so.
I think all the stuff is done. Do you know where Tom's at?
Yeah, his daughter's got a performance that he's, he'll be here for a year.
I I I believe Tom has completed his work too, so I don't anticipate anything new being added except for the pool. And then this correction. And then I'm gonna let Selby talk just for a moment about another new one that we're contemplating for rental for at this point. Do you want me to cover it?
So, yeah.
Because I don't know what the rate.
No, we haven't, we haven't decided. And it's just been, and it's very uh. We just discussed it not as a done deal or anything, but yeah. In management team meeting has been discussed. The idea of charging for use of council chambers. At least for charging for reserving it, holding it because it for non-city uh entities. So obviously, what we are doing is we're moving all of our committee meetings to this room, starting in twenty twenty four. Um, we had an incident where we had a parking advisory committee um um last month. And there was a member of the public who was unable to get to that meeting because the gate was closed. And we were upstairs, staff was in the conference room. Everybody participating in the meeting was remote. We had no idea that someone was trying to get in. So to avoid that from happening, and it's that, and there's no excuse for that. Um, to avoid that from happening, we want to make sure that all public meetings are accessible, so they will be in this room. We also will be reviewing tonight the library maintenance agreement. As part of that, they've reduced the the square footage that they that they reimburse the city for for maintaining. Um, they have traditionally used the council chambers. Um, so East Wenatchee reached out to the mayor and said, hey, they've done the same thing to us. They don't want to pay for use. They don't want to pay for council chambers anymore. So we're gonna start charging them a per-use fee. So that's just a discussion that we have started having. We have a number of um entities that do ask to use these chambers of. Basically thinking maybe a twenty five dollar per hour reservation fee um to 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 tie up the roof. Um, so again, this is not something that's decided. It's the first time you're hearing about it. We don't even have a proposal to provide you. It's just maybe.
Was that a re reimbursable twenty five dollars if you actually came and you lose it if you don't come? Does you know that?
It's a, it's a fee for use, but it's only the the use would be for those who want want to need the schedule. And so that we're tying it up basically, okay, and they would pay a usage fee for that.
Does that include technology?
So right now, we don't charge anything.
Right. So they could do this kind of conversation?
They don't use our equipment. But if someone were to come in and ask us if they could like use the screen, the watches in the meeting, they have their own equipment, we would. We would accommodate and we would help them out. Uh, you have to think about all the cleaning and the staff time as well. There's coordination. We have to let them in and we have to lock it back up. We have to ensure that, you know, they're here during our hours. We have allowed after five o'clock. So long as the library would help us take responsibility to make sure they leave. Take out their garbage if they have garbage in here, which didn't happen a lot of times. Uh, we tend to have to come in here the next day and put the room back together and take out the garbage. So. Yeah, it's, there's a cost.
I'd want the staff to recommend something since you all have to deal with it. And if twenty five bucks is too low and doesn't cover the time and energy put in renting it out, then I'd go higher. Not not the price you love, but you put the thought into it, let us know it makes sense. Then we'll try to shoot holes in it.
We we we've got this as as one of our things that we're gonna talk about in management team meeting too.
Twenty five seems really low, but if that covers custodial services or something or whatever.
It's twenty five an hour and a lot of times those are a couple hour meetings or so, so it it isn't. Totally insignificant, but. But again, we can. I know, you know, quite frankly, so this conversation, I mean, it started with a conversation I had with. Uh, Mayor Crawford from East Wenatchee and, you know, because we're both dealing with the library and being cut. And because they weren't paying for some spaces they used to and all of that and just saying, well. All of our costs go up and for them to go down, so a way of doing it. And and basically that's what they're charging is twenty five bucks an hour and. Library was fine with that. So we we figured that they, we could float that same and. Not have any pushback on it.
Maybe more for after business hours?
Yeah, we could we.
Twenty bucks an hour for after five o'clock.
Because these are all nonprofits, or at least the one, the ones that I meet with here, like the museum are nonprofits. And that's ends up kind of a chunk. Um, and the meetings aren't usually just an hour. I would rather that there was another way of getting any, getting that. I mean. If there are certain things that need to be done to do with exiting a meeting and that's not done, then maybe there's a charge there. Um, instead of charging nonprofits. It's really hard to find a place to be and um. You know, if the people aren't leaving it right, then it seems like that should be the tail end. You can't use it next time. Or there's a a fee for us doing cleanup here and the fee is twenty five, five dollars.
So the deposit system.
Again, this is just, we haven't put this in this. We don't have a proposal to provide you. Um, I did want to hear thoughts and we've heard some.
Yeah, the other thing that you can do too is have administrative. Function can waive it. At times, so you you have a fee and then it could be waived for small, like the small nonprofits that are. The thing is with the library, they're, they get a lot of tax dollars, folks, and if they're not poor.
Right.
So it's a different ballgame when you're talking about, you know, the library system than when you're talking about. The museum board or something like that.
Museum also gets a fair amount of money from the city.
Pardon me?
The museum gets a fair amount of money from the city too.
Right, they do, but they spend it, say with the museum and things they need. They need there. It's not like they aren't going to be having candy every week for. You know, it's, that's their, you know, that's what they're doing as a service for the city and for, you know, they're not doing it themselves.
Yeah, they're not a profit organization.
I know a lot of people who do use this traditionally are nonprofits.
Right.
But one thought that I had today when Andrea and I were discussing this was. They have a lot of city business as well. So if you want to reserve the room and you're not, and to guarantee that you are not bumped, then you'll be charged the fee. If you want to be flexible and something else comes and it's city business and you get bumped, you get bumped. That was an idea.
That would be more preferable to me because then if you're gonna get bumped, you have the opportunity to change.
Change.
That means to to find something another night or whatever.
Well, they also have the fire hall to use. That's pretty open too.
Yeah, the fire hall's free too.
Yeah.
That's about it. Well.
We can have a varying schedule, fee schedule, just like the festal. Festal has cheaper rates for nonprofits versus just regular community members.
It's all good food for thought. We'll bring you something in the future.
Don't make it too burdensome for you or for whoever wants to rent it. Keep it simple.
Thank you.
Well, that was all I had. Um, we'll be bringing this to you at the December. So that'll be the next time you'll see it for approval.
All right. Next is our comprehensive plan capital facilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, every year we are working to incorporate an update to our capital. Improvement plan, which is housed inside of our comprehensive plan. It's a way of tying. All of those planning efforts, goals, objectives and vision of the community into the ongoing. Project and financial budgeting process. So what you have in the packet is the. Um, new. Twenty twenty uh four, supposed to be to twenty twenty nine, so we're gonna have to bump that out. Uh, capital improvement plan, that's the first two and a half pages. And then you have the old. Oh, excuse me, it's in reverse. And then you have, you have the old one and then the new one. Um, last updated November sixth. Uh, our deputy public works director, Andy Zontak Baxter has been in charge of this. Document. She has updated it with new grant funding projects and. Is keeping a a running total of where things fit, working with Chantel. Chantel, have you had a chance to review this one yet? I'm not sure.
Well, I've done some preliminary looking and there are definitely a lot of amendments to twenty twenty four.
Right. Yeah, there's just been a lot of work going on. Um, I have to say Andy has been an excellent addition to the team. And and projects are moving forward, so it's wonderful to see. So this. Document will be going to the planning commission in December for a public hearing. Which I need to advertise. Any case, um, and then it'll be coming to the city council in January. So it's already been sent off to the state for their mandatory sixty day review. Uh, this time is provided for you to let me know which ones you might have questions on. And we will research and get back to you for the December meeting.
I do want to know, I really like the new design. The color coding and the way the sections are broke out. That was very powerful.
Yeah, I like how it.
And that was Andy, I I agree.
Yes, she did a great job. Council members, do you have any questions that we can research? It's all fairly standard, so don't feel like you have to have a question, but if you have one.
I have a quick question on the waterfront restroom force main under sanitary sewer sewer system projects. Um, it says city wastewater fund. Um, is that, that's the city fund meaning like comes from taxes, comes from uh use fees, that kind of thing?
Uh, Chantel, that's a finance question, Chantel. Do you want to take the lead on that?
Yeah.
Sewer enterprise.
I heard sewer, which.
Yeah.
Means no, not taxes. That's your sewer fund.
Okay, and so, yeah, what's this?
Generated by the users, the revenue, you know, the monthly sewer bill is what pays for all the projects in in a sewer fund.
Okay, so the enterprise.
Correct.
Okay, and if there's no, like, when we deal with specific downtown sewer projects. Are we incorporating lodging tax or that that?
We are.
Part of it. Because it doesn't say it there. It just says city wastewater fund.
Because commercial accounts pay for sewer bills too, and they pay very hefty sewer bills.
I get that.
So that it's, all those revenues go into the enterprise fund and the sewer line itself should be coming out of a sewer.
Yeah, it's part of it.
Not lodging tax.
Okay.
Sewer.
Well, it depends on who it's serving, that's my point.
It can. So for instance, the restroom is down there. One could say you could charge water and sewer and lodging tax.
Right.
That restroom is currently being funded a hundred percent by the lodging tax because we are fully expecting that to be a tourist facility.
Right, yeah, that's the ideology of talking.
So, so we can make those differences. But for the most part, if you have a sewer main or a sewer line that's being repaired, it's coming out of the enterprise front, not necessarily out of the lodge.
Okay, because you're saying it's a collective sewer thing anyway, since it's being used by the entire sewer system.
Right, and we're charging all these downtown businesses.
Oh, yeah.
Exorbitant fees versus a residence.
Well, I would imagine they're getting competitive fees. I don't think we're overcharging.
I'm just letting you know.
Okay, no, I know they can't.
Your sixty five dollar bill is nothing in comparison to the eighteen hundred dollar sewer bill that a. Medium sized restaurant pays.
No, but I think what I hear him saying though is that. This is particularly, I mean, this was in the downtown park. How much of the downtown park is not locals but visitors?
Well, I know it's shared. I use it myself.
No, I know, but I'm just saying that that there's probably at least a percentage that could be taken from. Hotel motel has.
Yeah, logic.
Logic.
Which particular one?
Oh, it was the.
The horse main to the downtown one that had to be.
Can you tell me what what pages are?
It's on page one and it's just uh two down, two from the top, the the title of sanitary sewer. System projects.
Oh, that's already done.
Yeah, that one's done.
That's done. That's last year's.
Oh.
That's not on this, that's not on the fourth, the the that's.
Because it says twenty twenty three.
It's twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine.
Oh, you're.
CIP is what.
You're looking at the last.
You're.
You're looking at the whole one.
Oh, God.
I'm sorry, I'm on the new one, which is another two pages past that. I'm sorry, I'm on the new one, which is another two pages past that.
Got the colors on it.
Not sure who put these in here, but the first couple pages are the existing one, twenty three. And the next pages are the updated ones that are colorful and they're for twenty twenty four through twenty twenty nine.
Okay, well, thanks, Selby, for clarifying that. I thought it was still in progress, it's like twenty twenty.
I can get that time back.
Yeah. Okay.
Two minutes, calm down.
Well, all right, that's fine, well, it's just the idea is uh Mayor brought up, the, you know, if something's a shared facility or a shared um. Infrastructure, it'd be good to look at different ways to fund it, and like you said, they're paying a good fair share anymore.
Exactly, it's it's very similar to how we got in trouble for using lodging tax dollars to help pay a debt service payment on the garbage truck.
Right.
That one said, no, you're already charging for garbage, the garbage fund has to pay for the garbage truck.
So that has to be something more exclusive first.
No double dipping.
Kind of like double dipping.
Okay, that's good, it's good to hash out the gray areas. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So no more questions, council, there is one in the audience.
Oh, Paula, you have a question on this?
No, I I do, thanks, Elby, um, so I was looking just at the residential street restoration program. I can't tell you what page it's on because I pulled it up on my iPad, but anyway, it talks about, um, well, it lists five, but it says six streets and and they'll have an overlay. Over the next six years, like at uh sixty thousand each. And I was wondering, because um I thought that it was gonna be. The streets were gonna be redone as the infrastructure was going to be put in, so I was just kind of curious to see this, um. Seems like a lot of money to do an overlay, well, you might have to rip it back up and and do the infrastructure.
Yeah, do you want to talk about it, Chantel?
Unless you want to.
Well, I just know the history, but you know it better than me, so.
Yeah, yeah, sixty thousand is just patching and repairs, it does not go very far. Uh, you're you're definitely not redoing any of these particular streets that are here, Shoals, Marshall, and Chappell, and that. This is purely just doing patchwork and these streets in particular. Some of them may have already been addressed. But I'm gonna assume that Tom has reviewed these and that these are the next ones on this list. Now, as far as the I C I P, Integrated Capital Improvement Plan, yes, he is very heavily involved in identifying. When we do a major street and that means ripping up that type of street, what we're gonna do is replace the infrastructure underneath it as well. Those kinds of projects, just to give you a a little insight, the portion of pine street we did, right about three point five million dollars.
Right.
So sixty thousand dollars is is just fixing, little tiny issue.
No, I knew it wasn't all the infrastructure, because I know you were talking about that being like at least a million, um, a block at each one that you replaced. Um, okay, so it does talk about the the fourth one mentioned is the fourteenth street from front to commercial, which I think you guys. Just took care of a couple of years ago.
That was done last year.
Yeah, I'll I'll have Andy take a look at that text.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
How much did it cost to replace the um? City Hall roof?
Sixty thousand.
Thinking somewhere between fifty and sixty thousand.
And fifteen, sixty, because I was looking here as we were talking about it.
Now, it was quite a few years back.
Pardon me?
And that was quite a few years back.
Okay.
Before construction costs escalated and doubled.
Okay. Because City Hall, if you look down under building and facility improvements with the blue line, down to Festal roof replacement. And you you go over estimated cost a hundred thousand. And you go completely over and trying to stay on the same line to two thousand and eight, twenty, is that two thousand and twenty eight?
Yeah.
Seems like it would have escalated to more than the hundred thousand by then, but that doesn't matter, we're not reading about that.
We are definitely quite a ways out.
Yeah.
They will be looking at those as we get closer to those years in particular.
Yeah.
So that, so they just left the left the hundred thousand in there, even though they know it's like several years. Okay.
Yeah. We're getting ready, next year we'll embark on twenty five and twenty six budgets, so it'll be critical for this document to have twenty four through twenty six.
Okay.
As good as we can possibly have them and out in the future.
It's.
It's it's rough estimates.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, it it's just a plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, council members.
All right, thanks, Laura. That'll be coming up then, the next one is just uh an item I want to put before you, there's no action tonight. But I just want to get any feedback or any questions or problems and that is. Committing some of our lodging tax to help the. With the countywide effort to do this pathways project. I know that is one of the things that's been. Priority, um, is connecting us to other communities and doing that. The good news is, I mean, the the C D T C, which is the. Organizing body that's kind of driving this, you know, got almost close to a million dollars in federal funding. And it just requires that local matches, and so our. Being one of the prime. Hotel motel folks that have those dollars, um. You know, they were being asked to throw in fifty thousand next year and fifty thousand the following year, so a total of a hundred thousand towards a. About a one point three million dollar plan, but it'll be, the difference is, this isn't just, again, that kind of. Thirty thousand foot plan, this is getting down into the nitty gritty where you can go after grant funding and to actually build portions of it, so. That's the idea behind this, take advantage of an increasing opportunities. But we gotta, we gotta jump on, so. Um, again, I just wanted to throw it out there, see if there's any heartaches or. Anything, and then otherwise, our next meeting will come as an action item.
What's their projected um timeline on anything concrete, ah, pardon the pun, but yes, concrete.
Uh, well. This plan is. I think they're putting it out for um. Request for proposals.
Okay.
Right away, and then the plan probably, it's gonna be, it's it's not an insignificant plan, so it's probably gonna be a year. Um, in the, at least in the process of getting all the. Things figured out. This is, this is going all the way down, you know, tying into the loop, but also um Shalan and Manson and. So this is a county, you know, it's it's a big deal.
I'm asking because it's been in the works for a long time.
Yeah, well, it's been on the. It's it's been on the back burner, basically, this is to take something that's been conceptual and getting. Getting it up to where it can, right now, there's nothing we've got that you could go and ask for grants for. Basically, um, or funding to actually build or because you don't have enough of it together. So, so where's this route? That's partly what they've got to determine is where the routes. Yeah, it was, there is, there's quite a few and and again, um. It'll be different, uh, I mean, it's gonna be, they they want to keep it off the the highway as much as possible, there is probably, might be. Couple of places where that's not entirely possible, but. Yeah, so. We'll see.
So they haven't got the route.
But the question is, yeah, and and, but the idea is that this would be. Bringing it into Leavenworth, so whatever that connection is, it would, we would get direct. All the way to Leavenworth and then. Um, yeah, wow, from where it goes from there.
That'd be awesome. Mayor, do you know what the breakdown of the overall funding is? It sounds like a lot of it's grant money, but we're putting in a hundred grand and then I.
County's putting in a hundred grand, there's um. City One Ache's putting in some, Cagir's putting in some, Shlan's putting in some, so I mean, all of the. The cities and the county is.
Matching.
Contributing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because I think the total is. Yeah, I don't want to say, but around four hundred thousand or so that's local. But.
Thank you.
Do you, do they have ideas of what that multi-use would be? I mean, are there horses and?
It's mostly, it's mostly bike paths, but you know, that's bike, bike and walking paths. Is the idea behind it.
That doesn't sound necessarily like multi-use, but it might, might.
Well, it's multi-off, it's. Non-motorized.
Well, that's gonna come up with electric bikes too.
Yeah, I know.
Be some, some gray area there, but that's.
Yeah, right. But there's no, if there's no big pushback, you'll see it as an action item, so just wanted to let you know.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great, good idea.
Yeah. All right.
So what do you want to have for study session next? So they. So what do you want to have for on study session for next meeting?
Yeah, some.
I think it's already, the auditor has an interview, how long will that take?
Uh, it's typically about twenty minutes. Just for.
Marco suggested discussing monthly surveys again.
That's just to keep us in the climate of the community, and I'd also like to see us address the idea and just either put it to rest or pursue it of. Maintaining the sledding hill since it's such a huge draw for our visitors. We have an opportunity to really serve them and create something great and it won't, wouldn't be a big deal to. Put snow there from our excess snow and to groom it so that it becomes safe, and I know there's legal issues involved with it, I'm not. Stepping behind those, but I feel like it's already a liability since we own the property. So to provide the visitors who I think it's a huge draw. With a safer and groomed sledding hill and then truly maintain it and offer that as a great part of our. Venue here in Leavenworth, which tons of people use anyway, I don't think it would be a big. Ask for us to maintain it, to groom it and then to put snow on it, and if we have a snowmaker, I don't know if the temperatures are ever good enough to use it, so. I'd love to bring that to discussion and either. Get consensus or put it to bed, let it make, let it become a dirt ice hill again.
Other council members want to add that to discussion for this meeting?
If so, we will invite, um.
People go to the hospital and that all the time.
Yes, if so, we will invite both our attorney and our insurer.
I mean, I think it's a big drop, that's definitely a drop. It's also one that we've been warning away.
Yeah, I know, I'd love to hear clarity on that, because I mean, it's not fair to say, look, we're avoiding risk, but people are getting hurt and we know they're getting hurt. Because they're gonna go anywhere. I don't think it's a good trade off.
Sure, why not? Have a discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
We're gonna need Tom at that discussion.
Oh, yeah, no, that's. Both towers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I meant, I meant our attorney.
Um, we're gonna have W C I A there as well. Um, the other thing, I can, I can't speak to this, the maker, it's. Snowmakers are generally made to broadcast snow over eight acres. Yeah, and this is a.
Yeah.
Eighth of an acre maybe, um, when it it when it was bought to try to enhance. Uh, the snow there and um, there's nothing but complaints when that was in operation.
And we could surplus that to ski hill, I'm sure they'd buy it, and then we could use just snow storage from our, with our dump trucks. And just dump it on there and groom it instead of, and have it like specific snow instead of pushing it everywhere and look at technologies to create. The grooming scene there without a snow cap, I don't think we need a snow. But, yeah, I think there's options and there's technologies to to solve that challenge and it'd be really a great representation of who we are.
We'll put it on the bucket.
Thanks, Mayor.
So, I think that. Talking about timed parking downtown. So, is it still at two hours or did it go to three?
Six three, it's three.
It's gone to three, okay.
It's always in three.
Hey, can you buy an extra hour? Or we have to move your car?
Um, at the moment, I don't believe that you can. But when the parking, I I would, uh, what park consultants. Did address this issue with myself and Shannon and with the Parking Advisory Committee, I do not recommend that. But I'll let them speak to it if you want to add it to future study session.
I'd like to hear from them. Yeah, we're, we're asking people to come here and spend money, and then we're telling them to get a leave.
No, we're just, we're directing them to park for less money in the locks.
Than their full lots.
That's the problem.
They're not all full though.
They fill up.
Well, that's why we're looking at.
Yeah, but I mean, if we had more levels, it'd be different, but you know, even Saturday. The lot was full. Well, hit the report, because that addresses. What the reality is.
And the um, the average day is actually about, just about two hours on the streets.
Yeah.
I remember the report, but so is that something that council, other?
Sure, update on parking.
We can get an update, we can get Rip lives to provide an update to the council.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I brought up with Mr. Williams the idea of a a residential parking permit downtown, he said some communities do that, most communities do. A shuttle where if you really want to go downtown, you get a shuttle to take you downtown, so you don't have to bring your car.
He had actually said that no communities have successful model and one offers Uber rides.
But they didn't say a shuttle, they said Uber.
Yeah.
Thought he said that.
And he said that a shuttle doesn't pencil.
Right, okay, no, like a shuttle just for parking does pencil.
Correct.
I didn't hear him say that there were no, no, because I've seen cities that have that not market. But he didn't see any models that were su- successful, but there were models out there.
I can let him speak to that.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
So audit sledding and parking, that'll be enough.
All right, we are a chance to take a break before, we didn't do that last time.
No.
All right.
It's a pleasure.
A break now until we're.
And then fasten your seatbelt.
I'm pretty near there.
Call the meeting to order for Leavenworth City Council from November fourteen, please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Ross Hall.
Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand.
Jason Lundgren.
Anne Heskey.
Zeke Reister. Marco Aurelio.
T Wolack. Great, all present and county. For, I would entertain a mo- uh movement to approve, move to approve the consent, a motion, thank you. Or movement, whatever.
Or movement, well, if all we could dance.
I wanted to make a move to, um. What do you call modify the consent agenda is one item I'd like to have a little pulled out.
Which one?
It was the discussion on the Fest Hall, the income, that sort of thing.
The management services? Festal Management Services.
It's a ma- management services, you're good, right, right, so you want to pull that?
Eight A.
Yeah, I'd like to pull that out, yeah.
Eight A.
Otherwise, I'm fine.
We can move that down to when we first get to our action items. To make that as a special item then. If there's no objection to that, then I would entertain a motion, approve the consent agenda with that. One change.
So moved.
So, second.
Second.
Yeah, okay, move by and seconded by T Bor. All's in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously. All right, now we're going to comments from the public on items that are not on our agenda. Is anybody here that wants to? Speak to something not on the agenda? Let's see, any hands? All right, then we will move on. We have a presentation by the Housing Authority to show a concept idea of what we might do. We want to be here for housing, yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
Everyone, my name is Kevin King, I'm the Director of Development and Housing Authority, Shalane County, City of Natche, and here to speak on behalf of Housing Authority. More importantly, I'm here to advocate for the residents here. More importantly, I'm here to advocate for the residents here of Leavenworth for additional workforce houses before the workforce house. Uh, so some of the things that we've done, uh. You guys have seen some of the initial renderings that we did for a project that like the two of these properties or. Stephanie Davis with the architecture. Um, with Mark King with ZDA architecture, but we should pray our executive director. And I visit builder CDF with the office of the Department of Housing. And so, yes, we would like to share some of the updates we did of those initial renderings that you saw. Um, but ZDA also took it upon themselves to be a second version. So. Yes, and so I would also like to answer any questions that you guys have today about, um. Some of those renderings and plans that we've done, and I believe, uh. All council members also have movements that he's proposed for maybe site control of the property. Uh, the chat's on, uh, back and forth, which we can afford our attorney and city's attorney. So everything in that exchange, we're gonna do this stuff. So we're gonna answer any questions that you may have about the plans, talk a little bit about them, and then any questions you have, questions as well.
So the idea is work with housing at what we now call pit. Um, we have designed for fifty-five. Units, uh, which is a, what, what that we mentioned earlier, we did. Um, during that idea of the launch studio, it was what we did from the last time. Um, this would require a little maybe. Um, so the biggest changes made since the last concept and utilization of the Jason's bike. Um, it's kind of opened up more opportunity for outdoor gathering space, more parking. So this would be the main floor. Um, the idea is we're potentially still to do. Two levels of parking below and then get to the main level. Um, and at the main floor, it would, uh, it's gonna include all of your retail space. Um. A large community area. Office rooms, full storage. Uh, you may notice like the retail space, uh, reduced just slightly since last time. Um. It's more the suggestion there. Really like to do this space, but you may not like that side of this room.
So the changes we've seen, you guys have seen, and actually changes that you recommended and wanted to see, but also, uh, changes that were recommended by potential funders of this project as well. And so, uh, Isabel did allow and we several of our potential funders that we would seek funding from. Uh, discussed our plans and got some feedback from them about a project that they would like to fund or what they would like to see project they were interested in funding. So some of these changes are based on that.
Is this funding or like investment? In other words, is there like a revenue thing that happens with this? Curious.
Um. It's, we're a nonprofit organization.
I get that.
And so it's not, uh, revenue based. But when we go out to seek funding to build this, uh, the funders will have input on what they want to see as far as. Uh, unit count, type of unit, parking, those types of things. And a lot of our funders that we generally see funding from. Uh, the idea of having retail space is a bit of a new idea.
Okay.
And so. We love the idea that something that we're very interested in doing, but the funders is, it's gonna take some, uh, some time.
The residential value is self-evident. I'm not questioning that at all. But I am asking is with the retail space, is it able to be sustainable? Will it always be? Have to like have some kind of subsidy associated with it.
The retail space would definitely be sustainable.
Okay.
Ideally, the time in retail space is actually offering it as a boarding retail space.
Right, yeah, minorities and different groups.
Yeah, and this is a similar model that actually worked under some housing with the downtown Seattle. Very successful with seventy and their buildings as well. Most of the retail space that I know with the restaurants, uh, First Avenue downtown Seattle operated. Lower than market rate, so very similar to what we see for. Leavenworth retail space is very high demand.
So and then, so the retail space sustains itself, but it can't kind of carry over and, and offer a little funding for the residential space.
I like that idea.
I like it too.
Yeah. So and, and I, I would say that I don't want to say there's not a possibility for that, but the Housing Authority would improve any revenue for the retail space.
Alright, so let's not plan on it, but maybe the tourism will work for us in that respect.
I like it.
Thank you.
Those are funding starts looking for return. No, they're, they're, they're looking to see the affordable houses. That's their, our funders, rural development, USDA. Those types of folks here, or so. Their, their investment to see the affordable housing, you know.
So what happens to the bond that's on the property? What happens to the bond that's on the property?
There's currently a bond on the property.
Yeah, two million dollars.
And. That's something that we can talk about too.
Dollar ain't gonna pay.
Well. I don't. We, we can, that's, that's what we owe on the lots and that can shift to the parking side of things too, so.
That's not our decision to make. That's the bondholder's decision to make, isn't it?
We would have to pay off the bond possibly.
Yeah.
But that can only negotiate in the ground, this agreement.
Okay, as long as they know it's there.
Yeah.
Uh, they do now, they do now.
How much is the bond?
Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head where we're at, but I know that this one goes through twenty thirty-three. The purchase of P one and P two.
Yeah.
The debt goes to twenty thirty-three.
Okay.
Is the bond, um, between each of the pit or the other?
No, it's the pit's smaller. Okay, so would it be more rated? It could be.
Okay, yeah. So the, the second and third quarter. He voted to the red temple.
Hard to hear the council too. Could you, uh? We don't, yeah, we don't have, uh, like, it doesn't. Our voices don't get amplified, so. Just to have, have them speak up.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Fighting or not.
And then if we go to the next page. Uh, this just provides the other three points that I used to let, I think that's personal.
Still can't hear.
I love this.
I was just mentioning that, uh, the previous rendering was the, the point that we provided the last time. Um, and then this is the new, new way with, uh. Utilization of the adjacent property. So they were able to add on to the building a little bit.
I have a couple of questions, maybe more than that. On, on page twelve, exhibit B, depiction of premise premises. There's that white square on the page. Is that just there or is it showing the property lines?
Showing the property line. That's a parcel now.
Okay, so it looks like it's going over into the where people live. Am I not looking at this right? I'm talking about the whole, I thought it was this.
No, no, no.
It's just that. Is that like that line? It's not this piece all the way.
No, it's just this right here, the shaded area. That's the shaded area.
Okay, well, okay. Um, my, uh, another question is. For the folks that, um, need the affordable housing that would be moving into there for workforce housing. Is that our workforce in Leavenworth or is that workforce from anywhere?
We cannot mandate co-deeds in buildings, so when folks apply for the housing. They have to go through the application process, um, it has to be equal, or equal, equal opportunity housing provider. Um, and so where they're currently living or working can't take into consideration as to whether or not they've been visited in structure. And thus, the idea is. Is that? People probably aren't going to be wanting to live and let them work and travel outside. I think. This is going to be a real opportunity for people already that would be here and let them work, work in here and let them profit from really affordable housings. I think the other thing you'll see is that people moving into that also looking to support the service industry here and that is what we spell, but that may not have been an opportunity. So adding to your next workforce as well.
But there's no guarantee. Can be, it can be whatever, okay.
But a good likelihood.
Yeah. Um. The parking, I was trying to figure out how many parking units you'll actually have that aren't. A part of the, the room, the bedroom and how, how many handicapped. Um. Is that, have you already planned for that?
Um, so. The first thing is one per unit. Um, so that's the requirement for tenants.
Yeah.
Um, but so it would be eighty-eight. Um. So that would be fifty-five at least for the tenants. We show a hundred plus, so. Does that answer your question?
Um, do you have, uh, how many handicapped would be in the, between those? A total of five, both floors. Or five on one floor, five on the next one, or a total of five. Five total. And so how many spots did that, once the, the people that live there have their spot and there's the handicap spots. How many on each floor are left for parking? Anyone to park.
I think I understand.
Fifty or fifteen? Fifty.
Cause how many spots are currently in Blue It?
Ninety-one, ninety, ninety-one or ninety-three.
So it's gonna be a net loss of sixty parking spots.
Regarding that.
Or public.
And we measured what's right there and it doesn't quite meet your apartment standards. So we. The stalls that they require by planning are larger than we have striped there, probably because those were grandfathered in the strike. So we're, we're struggling with that a little bit because we did count what you already have, was trying to work with that. Keep that number, but. If you were to restripe it to meet your city standard, you would lose stalls.
And so are we not going to re-stip, stip it to city standards?
That's a few.
Okay.
But that, we are, we are currently in the new design, we can meet your city standards.
You'd be what?
In the new design that we're showing, we can meet your city standards for width, depth, and. Um, and that, and the, the parking, the drive aisle between the parking spaces. That's mostly where. Our difficulties are is the drive aisle with. Uh, so we have measured what's out there and like I said, it doesn't quite meet your kind of parking standards in your planning. Uh, uh, codes and regulations.
And I will, I will just say anecdotally, I park there five days a week. Uh, Monday through Friday, and I, I'd be hard pressed to see thirty-three cars parked in that parking lot during the. During the week. Weekends are a completely different animal, I understand. So you're saying if we abandon our standards, we'd get more parking?
We, we maybe squeeze a little more parking in if we were to have some. We wave with your standards.
It meets another engineering standard that works and is adequate for.
Sure.
Okay, that's the question.
If you'd like us to propose another engineering standard that we've seen somewhere else in the state or other jurisdictions where we could do that.
I'm always up for change. Maybe things better.
Has to meet our code, Marco.
Well, it's something we can vote on and change.
I remember ninety-six spots actually in the, the pit structure. That you were mentioning. So I think we counted less.
That's, that was the number I was working with.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Kind of like seventy-seven.
You know, it gets closer to. Okay.
I'm just going off our most recent parking study that we're having done. I'm not sure how.
Did they count the ones that are outside?
Just, I don't know, I just see this parking lot, this number of spaces, and I don't know how they counted them.
And that was the other thing that you're struggling with. You have parking stalls that are over the. That they're along that kind of alley, but they straddle the property line. So yeah, we were working everything within the property boundary. The housing authority wants to work within their property if it becomes their property. So that was another. Component that played into all the, the parking. So there's definitely some ways that if you maybe can adjust the parking.
So let me get something straight. We've got technically ninety-five parking spots. That you actually showed on here, but actually if we stick to current codes, we don't quite have that many. Is that what you're saying?
No, no, what we're showing there each.
Okay, so basically we have ninety-five parking spots.
Yes.
Okay. And we have fifty-five units that were, okay. That leaves this, okay.
And there's a good chance. That most of our tenants that reside in this building would not have their own vehicles. Uh, one of the big ideas is that if where we want to build this structure and where we're anticipating people working, working will be. Walking or biking distance of the, their place of business where they're working. And so. We're counting on all of the parking stops being utilized by tenants while we're mandated to have them for tenant use. There'll be a good chance that there'll be extra parking stops.
For retail, in other words, somebody wants to shop there, they could park down.
Yes. Um. We can work that out, yeah. Or if somebody didn't have a car in their parking space, it could be for other parking.
Yeah, I mean, the big question is, could you use that parking area if you could squeeze more in for revenue generation?
Okay.
That's my point.
All the auxiliary parking, the idea is that would remain city paid parking. Anything beyond what we would need for residential use. Would remain with the city to be for city paid parking.
Seems like most people have two cars.
It's the norm. But just in a lot of like conversations I've had with some of the local folks, pardon me. Um, people that work in the service industry, um, I was fortunate enough to be invited to have a booth at the block party here. And had a lot of great conversations with local people working in the service industry, living here in the area. Um. I will tell you that it was overwhelming support, uh, the words of support that you received and. Agreement to the need for additional workforce housing. Uh, it was amazing having to be a part of that, but. Most of the people that I spoke to were actually of the opinion. You know, we don't even need parking there at all if it's gonna be so close to where people are gonna work. Um, and you could talk with some of the planning permission members, uh. That were going, God, yeah, we wish that we could reduce the need, you know, the requirement for parking for a building of that type. But obviously, you know that those mandates need to stick, that's. But yeah, it was interesting to talk to some of the community members and people like to ride their bikes and people like to walk around that park. Do you explain some of the alternatives that you might have considered for the east end of the property? There's sort of a jigsaw. Piece that is. Undeveloped. And then you have the plaza with it looks like, you know, eight or ten parking spots. Could you, I bet you brainstorm some different alternatives there.
Um, briefly, um, this is just the first half of the design, um. We explored using a more. Going kind of, kind of going with the shape of that, of that lot. Um. But nothing's been solidified yet.
So you guys haven't got any plan how you'd use that extra spot yet? At this, at this stage?
The, the adjacent.
The adjacent.
Parcel.
Yeah.
Uh, what we have, but it could be. Further developed to.
Can we display that for the audience?
Are you talking about where the espresso stand?
Yeah, can we display some of the design sheets, especially the, this like the site overview? The second page of the design set, can we show that for audience benefit?
And I think the idea is is like that space right now is primarily set aside for parking and you can hear, you can cycle a little. Area or some table up there, things like that. That's a part which would do as well.
Yeah. Yeah, the US games, parking was a lot, so I tried to. Uh, some space for parking. Uh, it's a little tricky work with that shape.
And that sort of this part may be great for some city.
So do you want me to change some other slide or?
Casey, the expert.
I was thinking in the second page of the architectural designs, like the.
Gives it over.
That one, right there. Yeah. So is there?
There is also what looks like a big street in there that might be utilized. And we haven't explored that either. Which would be this, this kind of connector. But it doesn't connect really to highway two, but we're not sure who owns this or what it is. Wouldn't kill this. How do you look at it? But if it's assuming parked over utility, something. Same question. Okay, so some of that might be, could maybe utilize if we have the ability. To use that land out of here or what it is, it's just. It looks.
Right away.
From what we've seen, it looks kind of like an old alley or a sector.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And it converted to a drive. Awesome.
This is where the avenue was.
Different drivers, some retail states as well. And people are thought it's right on the rest of there. No, I see.
Where would the retail get their deliveries as it sits now?
There are loading areas.
There's a loading area we had designed through here. This is high and then it drops down quickly. Uh, and that's kind of what creates the pit, a lot of the parking.
I love the concept. I mean. It's an early draft. I think it's great.
It was fun to drive in town today and look and see where the pit is, picture the structure there, but a face and type would look like the, the buried building right there. Uh. I think it's going to break.
Oh, it sounds like this, like the. Eight, two bedrooms and a, and starting upon the other, like a whole bench of that, that room is studio. So Sarah, I'm listening about when you take that, how many people are approved there? You know what? Typically, I'm my manager at that point.
We actually have a mandate that having people can be facilitated.
And what?
That way it depends on the unit size, but it can be generally for like one of the studios, it'd be two people. Same for the one bedroom, depending on families, have kids, but yeah, it'll be something, it'll be standing for how many people can occupy specifically.
So what has the mandate that one bedroom that you have worked with?
It depends on the, the property, the brand, but. Uh, generally it's two people for a one bedroom. And I think up to four people for a two bedroom.
Oh, it's a conference. So the one bedroom doesn't like they would, you know, it would just be. Or a, a mom and a child.
It, it depends on those. And so we, we kind of get to write that into our.
Oh.
As far as what's he. Based on building code and square footage and access. And occupancy. Um. If you max one would be two to four in the smaller units and like. Two, uh, four to six in the larger two bedrooms, but. When we go back through and watch the properties, rarely we see them at that type of mass. Yeah, pretty crowded.
Right. Any other questions of council members? Again. Appreciate the time and.
What's our next step, Mayor? Yeah, next up, um, there is a, a draft lease agreement in the market. Um, that we brought forth for our action by the end of the year. It'll most likely be the, um, December meeting.
That's great.
Actually, cause I don't have, I have big enough time to do my write up and I go on vacation tomorrow.
And that's, and that basically gives them site control so that then again, they can start the process of. Getting the funding.
Right.
We're starting to build those building blocks and getting it together, so.
To be clear, um, if you do authorize the signing of the lease, the city would continue to operate this paid parking program there. Um, while they're doing their due diligence, then getting their funding.
Well, we, do we have an MOA with them that describes the relationship leading up to construction in terms of? Design review input? That kind of thing?
There is.
All spelled out the lease.
That's in the lease.
There's a lot of stuff in this lease.
Okay.
Is it pretty standard for this type of lease to just be one dollar?
Gentleman's lease, that, I mean, we've had similar leases that, yeah, that's. But there's, it's not, the lease isn't based around modern hearing gate. It's really based around the path and having a place for us to seek funding for the project. That's really what the lease is there for is it gives us site control and it's just our ability to others instead. We have site control of this property, so that you can coordinate, you can actually build on.
Guarantee.
That's also public contributor requirement to have seven dollars each.
Yeah.
How much of the investment have you achieved for funding, sorry?
We can't even go out to funding until we have.
Okay.
So that's really the next piece of the puzzle. And I tell you, we've already got a roller skates on already. Our developers aren't even the funders. We're excited about this project. And I mean, also I can share with you. Building in Leavenworth is the exciting thing for everybody. Um, I've, I've got presented a couple of conferences about affordable housing. Uh, in the Pacific Northwest and have actually had funders come talk to me, hey. Tell me about this Leavenworth project. People are hearing about it. People are excited about it. Um, that's one of the great things about Leavenworth is everybody wants to come to Leavenworth and. Um, like our artists act here. You know, they, they love working here in Leavenworth. CBA is actually the group that's done, holds the renovations at Garden House and the very village apartments. And so very familiar with Leavenworth and, you know, like being here.
So Kevin, I had a question about the parking. Once you take control. How does that, so you have control of? Uh, the, the, the parking spaces that are no longer, that aren't needed by the, by the tenants. That's, how does that work? Do you get the income from that? Does the city get the income? Is there an arrangement or is it just what happens with that?
Any parking beyond what we require for tenant use would be for city use and for city income. The way I see that working is very similar to the lease that we are asking you to provide less for site control, we'd be providing. A, a, a reasonable gentleman's lease to do for leasing the, the parking spot, seeing as how. The idea is you're going to give us this amazing piece of property so you can build this more or less, right, so. I think would be only fixed.
Right. Okay.
So really it's whatever additional parking is goes back to our state.
Okay.
You have any questions?
If we, uh, the property might, you know, the entities that might have. Have you built things in other areas for your founding, you know, they are one people with that?
The Leavenworth is a special place since, um, and this is a specific type of building. So we operate twenty different properties across the United States. And it, it's, it varies about a few hours. Uh, we operate several senior properties, Silver Garden House. I would say it's amazing to be twenty five percent. It's a street level.
And that's staying out.
Yeah.
There's some black building.
Absolutely.
So I mean, so what this would be. Yeah.
There's just a lot of prime. Should be generally. Right. That's why.
I think there'll be less. Based on the ideas that people like to ride bikes and walk their, like, terror. That's nice. And just. There's a lot about recognizing this property that's, and that's very easy. We're also operating. Um, so fortunately that's. As to the insurance leases. That's just.
Obviously, we're not, we didn't.
Yes, because we import the housing projects, there will be in helping with that. People could only have a certain income to a driving property.
Devin, I have a question. Do you guys ever do revenue sharing on your retail spaces?
If you, we don't have any retail space, this would be a new venture for the housing.
So because we're giving up fifty parking spots. That are revenue generating, gathering, bottlings, beef and the. Parking, every car that parks in the commercial zone spends X amount of dollars every day. So to make that up. I would like to see the city get a share of the retail space revenue so that we can go out and acquire more durable parking. And more housing. And then more housing so that it's constantly working and rolling. But if we're going to give up to fifty parking spots. We need to get some, for me, besides the housing. We need to get something in return in the revenue side. I would think if you guys could work that out.
Um. That's going to be where the funder. And so when you go out. When you see funding, you get sure projects built. The funders that are going to pay to build the projects, they have a whole lot of input about what we can, can't do with property, right? It's contractual.
Okay.
Um, I don't see. To have new where the retail space would be able to buy down, which is.
Like if you get this twenty six hundred dollars of community space. On this, it's kind of square feet. Yeah, twenty six hundred square feet. What that's on the, I'm guessing that's on the east end or the northeast end. What is the plan for that? Like just for tenants to use or to have? Rent a lot of that, what is there?
I think it's for tenant use, but then also because we're going to have the retail space that some of that area would be utilized by the retail space. Well, we'll, you know, say a cafe with some tables out front, get their business that.
Yeah, yeah, because it's not designated. It's, it just says community, so I didn't know.
So at our other properties, the community space is also available to. Other, uh, nonprofits that serve the same income population that we're serving. So, you know, somebody needed a meeting space or, uh. Uh, space for classes, uh, that's what we've done. Shortly at our other properties. And we don't charge for that.
That's great. I know that was a discussion you guys were recently having in office room two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Add a little extra.
We're charging everybody twenty five bucks.
After the man.
State roller skate.
Will you have a manager there?
Yeah. Um, there's a question, Mark. Some of the funders that we use, um, such as we just built a sixty six units in Penneyat. And part of a funding structure for that property mandates that we have a live-in onsite management. And so two of our properties we have live in onsite management, but not in all of our.
Cause their garden house, you had one, but now you don't.
Yes, we have a key holder there now.
If we don't have an onsite manager, we would, we will have a site manager who is at the property every day, just not living there. But as Kevin said, that'll depend on the funding.
Yeah, because. Knowing people that live there. It's a problem. That there's no manager. So I just wasn't wondering if there would be one here.
People loved the live-in manager at Garden House. I believe her name was Linda. She was, yeah, she was well-loved and people did miss her last for sure.
They definitely miss manager.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we do have a manager at Garden House as well. We actually built a brand new office right up in front of the building as well. Um, he's just been, uh, out on that most recently, but there will be a manager there.
Twenty four seven?
No, not twenty four seven. Just for your regular business hours.
But it's, uh. A unit in your layout for a.
Manager.
Manager.
Yes, first floor all the way to the right.
Yeah, that's retail, I think.
Oh.
Our managers.
Right, right. Yes. Have you guys done a revenue analysis for? Retail? In other words, just a projection saying, hey, we have these kinds of retail coming in. And I know that's kind of ahead of the game. But knowing that we get three million people a year coming to Leavenworth, I mean, it's worthy to do some kind of. Sensitivity analysis, saying if we have this kind of potential sales, we'll see this kind of potential. Like if you're. What you're charging for lease and going back to what people have said, that could be a shared revenue source for the city and your project.
We have not done that yet, but guaranteed that's something mandated as part of the. Structure of, of completing that, that'll be something like that. We'll see that there's a chance that we can get a funder that might come in and say, yep, I'm going to fund it, get rid of the retail space to fund it. And at that point, if that did happen, we may come back to community council and have a discussion and say, how do you guys feel about it all? Put it to chess, residential. Because we got some funding on the line, but they don't fund the retail. So I think some of that piece may come up for negotiation when we get on any of a secret.
Okay, put another layer of parking on.
Yeah.
Or just cut off the roof and put a penthouse restaurant.
Yeah. Yeah. That sounds good.
If that would happen, would you then? Have to do some redesigning and then from back here or at that point, well, we have let it go to whatever.
There's a lot of designing from here on to, to happen. So. Um, yeah, we completely redesigned the concept, not extremely, but we did. Rework the concept, we might have more units, we might have more parking, you know, it, it, it's. It would ever flow depending on funding, the, the housing code is able to see here, that kind of thing, so. So, uh, yeah, these are very essential. It will change. By the time we come in for a payment from it. There'll be a lot of, a lot more detail, a lot more, a lot of changes. Um. The exterior may look a lot like what we presented to you. We really wanted to focus on with the varying. And just work with what's here with the city and continue to augment that and then. Make, continue to make Leavenworth what's like one zero. So that's where we really focused was that exterior. Then look at curb appeal, so.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you. If we ask, uh, Rob, a few just boards, writing up the revenue stuff to leave with you. Okay, um, welcome to. Play them, pass them.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Got a question on the screen.
Yeah.
Did you want to take a question?
Um.
I'm, I don't know that we're, we need to, I think we need to wrap this up and move on. This isn't really a.
Sure.
Right, decision thing. We'll go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you. You got it all in the suit.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Funders, you can't just be like, these are, these are the.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, our next item is going to be a, the continuation of the public hearing on the multifamily tax exemption program. Again, this is, uh. The second extension. This is our third time that we'll be doing this, uh, public hearing. Um, just a reminder that a public hearing is a time just again to make your statements to the council on the multifamily tax exemption. It's not a time to discuss, it's not a time to get questions answered. It's a time to give your input and your opinion on the matter. Um, we've had two of these already. If you've already entered your opinion into the record, there's no need to do that again. That's been part of the record. Again, this is our third. So we want to make clear that what we'd like to hear is those who haven't had a chance yet. To be able to state, you know, their needs on this matter. Um. And again, that we've had two workshops, we've had one forum and this is our third meeting on this. And so we want to, you know, use that time wisely. Um, so if. You do want to address the council, um, again, uh, the process would be you come up and you state your name. And your address. And your address. Um, this is a public hearing. So it's more official than what we just. Do for regular comments. Um. And so we'll open the public hearing here at seven forty three. Um, and we'll open it up for the public to make comments. So you'd like to. Um, you can step to the podium and like I said, state your name and your address and. If you're other comment.
Actually, I noticed.
No. Uh oh.
So, uh, Andy Lane, uh, three twenty one Tom Water Drive here in. First, uh, I want to encourage you to adopt the multifamily tax exemption program. It's another tool in our toolbox. Uh, that you've all been working on for years. Yeah, these is in player game, these are in this. It's, and it will help. Encourage developmental housing that. Will provide for. More of the economic segments of. Community. And we need all of the economic segments. Any community does to provide. So I know you all the pros and cons of this stuff you've been studying and from a, I've listened to a lot of podcasts, so. I am not going to dig into any of them. I do want to say. Thank you for doing this hard work. Uh, for listening to everything that we all had to say, all of the studies. And all the history of the meat, so the course and stuff. Sorting through it and doing. What is best, not for out loud voices at the moment. For what the future is going to be. Thank you for taking them. Your time, if you can be glad. So appreciate it. Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
Angela, is there a way to change the view where we can see all the boxes or more of the boxes than four?
Yeah, the people that are on.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Kurt Peterson, uh, twelve seven hundred. Spring Street UGA. That that often is a uh. Thing be distinguishing factor. Um. You know, I. I can't say, uh, without more enthusiasm how I want to stop. My property taxes of increasing. I want to stop. Having to pay more. For things in this town. And that's why I actually want. The multifamily tax exemption apps, our T D four. You're probably going, wait a minute. You don't want to pay more taxes. Why do you want the tax exemption to go through? Well, that's because my housing. Assessed value continues just skyrocket. And that's because there isn't, there aren't enough units. There aren't enough, there's not enough housing. And so because of the lack of housing. I'm having to pay more in product tax. But I want more housing. And I want developers to be encouraged to build more house. Right? And that's where the, you know, I I definitely want more housing for workforce house. I mean, that's actually, I think everybody wants that. But the bottom line here is actually want to pay less. Very selfish motivation. I want to pay less in taxes. Because I want more units. And I want developers to build more units. So the prices go down. And more people can afford to buy housing. And then I pay less. I pay less in the shops because the. They don't have to keep paying for uh increased. Labor costs. Passed on me. I know they're not paying for it. It's coming to me. So anytime I eat dinner downtown. I'm going to pay more. So I think we've got maybe some. We have to flip the script on this a little bit. This is now not about paying an extra. What, ten fifteen bucks a year? An added increase in the levy? It's about saving money. So I want to save money and that's where I, why I support this uh. This tax exemption. So thank you.
Thank you. Kurt, we'll see.
Um, let's go online. We got Ann. Ann, if you'd like to unmute, we need your full name and address. No. Okay, let's try Steven.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Steven Buer, one six one West Benton Street. Um, I will keep it quite short. Most of you probably know what I'm going to say. I will echo um Andy and Kurt's comments and. Encourage you to uh pass this multifamily tax credit. And that is all. Thank you.
Steve.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thanks. Bless you.
Anybody else out here?
Back to your perspective. Um, and I've been compelling these as well. Um, I don't feel a lot similar as baby sleepers. Um. I. Yeah, I, I, um. I think that Aaron did a really good job last week at telling us kind of what, you know, the the spectrum of pretty of this. And uh, I don't think that for a community this this small. Uh, it would be quite the same as being in a community like actually. I mean, we are looking at possibly. A huge amount of uh new residences, the rentals that will be up between five and um. Top stick in the one from three hundred to three hundred and sixty eight. And uh, thought that, you know, all of a sudden we don't have any place for people to be. But that's not so quite accurate. Um. You know, when you look at what that could assess out at, it could be between eighty and ninety million. So when we look at what you guys were telling us. Ten dollars for an eight million dollar project, that doesn't seem accurate either. So there's been a lot of confusion about this, this tax exemption that. That has been um heard from you, have been heard from Lilith, has been heard from Carl. And I went talking to Lilith, um. You know, the last meeting, she, you know, she's really gung ho for it. Carl, I know it's something that you really want because you really have a desire for affordable housing. Um, but when I was talking to you, we told you, we were talking about a lot, this hasn't been done in a small community before. He said, well. I know that, you know, people say they would be the king, but let's, you know, let's just talk for it. I will feel that confident that we should just go to things that haven't been tested at least somewhere. I know it should tell when I was talking with you. At the um, the engagement night, you know, we were talking, we got into multi um tax exemption and. And uh, you said, yeah, no, it can be a little confusing, but I would taxi just to have a tool in the toolbox. That, that, you know, a lot, I hear a lot about people wanting to put this tool in the toolbox. But you don't got, you don't want to get a clunky tool that you don't know how it works and just throw up the box they have in the box. And so it just seems like we should step back and do a little bit more looking at this. Um, you know, we had other choices. We have um. We have, it seems like three choices. We have the tax shift onto the residences. And we have a tax shift on to the city and the city gets two hundred thousand dollars a year. To put towards affordable housing. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think that's what he told me he goes into. Uh, the main project. And what about if we took some of that? And use that for this tax shift instead of putting it on, putting that burden on the residences. And then there's also where you can find tax loss. Which then the city doesn't got money, which it doesn't mean there's actually lost the money, just means it doesn't get the money. So it's just not the tax gain from this property. And so I, I would, I would pause, yeah, I would call, you know, call it to, to pause on this. And just get a little bit more information before you put this into a, oh, God, this is.
Thanks, Paulie.
I have no idea what I'm going to say. I'm beginning it. So, but I am definitely, I'm, I'm sorry, Susie Lane.
Yes.
Stand up, thirty two one Tom Water Drive, Leavenworth. And I urge you to adopt. The multifamily tax exemption. Okay. Um, there's no certainty. I mean. I know we all want certainty. We want to know all the decisions ahead of time. This is going to work. So you want to keep the right people, you know, moving the buck. There's just no certainty. I mean, a lot of this is. We don't even know if there will be any developers that are able to do this because. You know, construction policy is not knowing. Simply gives them this incentive, we're able, because they have their, you know. Not all developers are able to make, I don't know, but they have payrolls and they have to be able to take it and sell out. And you know, this exemption will enable them to say they're going to maintain. You know, on the property and not the. The, what they build for a period of time. To incentivize them to actually do this. And so. Nothing is certain. I'm not really, it's not really to me a tax shift from what I've read in the. And the father and I, we. They have what I. People around with it. Does anything at all will be a miniscule amount. And I'm okay. I'm okay if my property taxes go up. What I think the projection, the worst projection. If they're all projections, it's like. Two lattes. A year. I mean, it's not even certain that. It's going to cost us that much. I want us to be a G to all. Where people come for. Young people, old people like me, you know. Um, and people raising families. And we just have to have a lot of different options. And we don't know for certain, there's no certainty that this is going to have to work. We don't know that developers are going to go for it even. There might not be anyone that wants to do it. But I think it's, it's an incentive and we need that in our toolbox to have an incentive for. So I hope we will consider passing it. I'm, yes, too.
Thank you, Susan. Thanks, Susan.
Good thinking.
Good winging.
Um, Ann, you want to try again?
Yeah. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you. Okay, so.
Full name and address, please.
Oh, uh, Anne Crosby through Sixth Cascade Street in the city. So. It's, it, from my experience, the um. Hardly any homeowners here have any idea what you guys are considering. Raising the property taxes for all current owners. To help people who earn, you know, in the moderate category up to ninety two thousand dollars. Who want to buy a new house here. So that was uh pretty hard to imagine before this came up. And we learned from the assessors representative that there's no upper limit. On how high these property taxes can be shifted on to us. And that really, that's a really great concern. Because developers can devet, can submit hundreds of new homes. Put them in this program and we as property owners cannot vote on this increase. The builder decides how many units will have shifted taxes on to us. And it could be as much as the entire high density development with no limit. So for homes that could be uh sold within this program, I think it's twenty five percent have to be affordable. So we would pay property taxes for the remaining seventy five percent of those new home buyers. Who will have no in, no limit on their income. And who don't have to work here. So this gradually increasing this debt on us on a small number of us homeowners in Leavenworth. It's a legally binding debt. That, that we will owe for twenty years. And it remains with each of our homes. So if we want to sell our homes, the next buyer will have to continue paying. Paying on those shifted taxes for that whole twenty year period. I see this, this is my main point. I see this as a legal way to bankrupt many, many Leavenworth property owners. And force them into foreclosure. I know you hadn't probably thought of that. I know that's not your intention. But when you look at the long view of this. With something that's going to always increase over a twenty year period and ongoing. That's where it's going. And the, the, there's so many unknowns about this tax shift program. Which will definitely make our town, our properties less desirables. And thus less valuable. Since who would volunteer to, to pay other people's property taxes when they could just choose to live somewhere else? Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
So I want to, I wanted to state that what I'd like to hear is opinions on the concept here and not. Factual information that you think you're providing about the program. Because there were. Statements just made that aren't factual. Um, so the idea of a public hearing is to get your opinion. About the concept. Not statements that. You think are factual. This is not a program, just to counter what was said. This is not a program that is unlimited and determined by developers. This is a tool that the council can choose to use on a project that is brought to them. They're. Still in control of what is, it's not the developer that determines what they get to do and what they're going to shift. It is still the council. This is not about. Getting. Raising anyone's taxes today. It is about, and you've heard the term, and I'll use it again. A tool that can be in the toolbox. So that if a developer comes and we don't know of any that would or are in the queue. If they come, it can be considered. That's all that this is about. So I want to make that clear. And any other statements, I would like them to be whether you like. The concept or not like the concept. But please don't try to. Educate us on what it is because. That, that's. We're getting in territory that's just not helpful. Travis.
Hi, everybody. I wish I was there. I was traveling last week and uh. I'm not feeling well. So I didn't, we didn't want to come uh be, be around everybody and get everybody else sick. Um, excuse me. Um, first off. Hey, Carl, thank you for, for what you just shared. Um, this is, I appreciate you even bringing up some of those points. You're right. This is, this is the time. Um. To kind of voice the opinions, not facts. And. Yeah, I want to, I want to say that Andy and Kurt and Stephen and Suzie, I align with them. And I truly believe this is something that. The city council and you guys should um pass. And I commend all of you on the city council and Carl. Um, for continuing this uh and to the point to where it's at right now. And this type of project in particular is right on time. Um. It's not five years from now and, you know, maybe five years ago, maybe should have started, but this is, this is something needs to begin now. And um, it looks like. Hopefully, we're getting close to um. Adopting this. And um, that's, that's kind of it for now. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Travis.
Thanks, Travis.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Les Peterson and I live in the UGA at twelve seven hundred Spring Street. And I am, I spent the morning reading this the week and I'm highlighting it. And I just want to say it's very exciting to think about. I'm a hundred percent for adoption of it. I think. My understanding is that we added something like three hundred or three hundred and fifty workers toward downtown corridor recently. In the last year or two years. And um, we, we have to think. Better about housing. We have to be more considerate. We have to be more compassionate. For the people who work the lesser jobs. And I'm not. Necessarily talking about teachers and nurses and doctors. I mean, I have a, personally, I have a doctor who left Leavenworth because they didn't like fighting Leavenworth winter faculty. We have to make it. Appealing to live here or people won't work long term. You will get dependable. People working in your beautiful, lovely, fantastic neighborhood. And I, I really hope that this. Um. City council has encouraged to adopt MFTEP, the multifamily and tax exemption. And also, I just want to say, it says in here that uh it's been widely used. Well, within the state of Washington for years. So that is not any big area for us. It's not a big. That is my two cents on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Stacy.
Yeah, hi, can you, hopefully you guys can hear me. Um. Thank you, everybody, for your input and to the council and mayor for raising this. I, I did provide uh feedback.
Start. Pardon step, state your name and address, please.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Stacy Heard in the city limits. Two ten Pine Grass Street. Okay.
Yeah, good.
So um, there is this concept of adding new tools to the toolbox. And as somebody in business, you know, whenever I have to bring a new toolbox, I'm challenged to make those data-driven decisions. And so I just want to encourage uh this team to provide that data to citizens. So that we can make that informed decision. I do want to also raise that we have, I believe, three potential new council members uh who were elected last week. And so unless there is a real critical need to pass this today. Could we consider postponing it until those people are in office so that as they enter office? We can have an informed decision with all the, the decision makers around the table. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Julie. Julie.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yes.
Great. This is Julie Ham Street. I live at two six eight Shoals Street in the city limits. Um, I want to thank all of you as well. I would like to say that, like, I think pretty much everybody in town. I support uh additional affordable housing. And um, I also want to say I found the assessor's presentation uh last week extremely informative. Um, and while I do support affordable housing and understand that you want to put this tool in the city's toolbox. Um, I am extremely uh against it. I don't think it's proven to increase workforce or affordable housing, in my opinion. I do not believe it's appropriate for a community of Leavenworth small size and while Washington state allows. Smaller communities to to use the MFT Es. Um, there's a reason, I think, that we can't find any comparables because it's just really not an appropriate tool. Especially for a city of Leavenworth size. Um, uh, also, it, in my opinion. Places an unfair burden on those of lesser means um without. Anyway, anyway at all of ensuring that this housing that it creates will go to a local workforce. Um. Somebody said previously, there's no certainty and to me that would be the best reason at all not to proceed with this. Not that you have certainty with with anything that you pursue. But in this case, because it has a goal, a stated goal by the city of producing more affordable. More workforce housing. And, and we have no clue whether that's even going to materialize. We haven't done any follow-up. Or any studies on the uh higher density. And the infill with um accessory dwelling units that we've already embarked on in this city. And uh unless we're paying attention to whether or not the things we're doing are working in the first place. I really don't think we should, we should add to that. So. Bottom line for me is I would encourage the city to continue, continue per- um pursuing other ideas. Um, completely in favor of more ideas and more tools, but um I think this is the wrong tool. Thanks.
Thanks Julie.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, Brewer.
Yes, sir. Uh, two oh two Commerce Street, Eric Snyder. Um, hundred percent against it. Uh, oddly enough, I'm one of those lesser workers downtown. And so yet, um, seems like the burden uh lies on me to pay this tax for these other people. Doesn't seem like a good deal on my end, seems kind of silly, but that's my opinion, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we've heard from, yes, oh, you want to say some?
Hi, I'm uh Michael Cummings, one oh two five one North Road. And um, I just want to say that I love your concept and. I've read through quite a bit of the materials and, and like the general idea. But when I read it, uh, I feel like there might be some tightening of language maybe needed and and some concepts and. I just had some general questions, so I'd really like, you know, maybe to be able to come back to city hall or a council member and just sort of. Maybe get some of those questions answered. Uh, part of it, uh, Kevin outside, I think we'll answer some of the first question. One is the. The eighty percent of median income and the hundred and fifteen percent median, I've actually talked to several council members. And no one's ever been quite able to say what that is. And I just wanted to make sure, okay. Do most of the people that are minimum age or minimum wage workers qualify for this sort of thing or none of them or do only. Part-time and disabled people qualify or, you know, where are we at these numbers? So. It, it seems like we need to know this before we, you know, make our final decision. And um, then uh, next, it appears that the. That housing authority really has some definition on how they like create rental rate structures and things like this. In this particular proposal, I didn't see anything as to, okay, you, you, they qualified. But how do you then create that rate? You know, is, is that rate going to be proportion of something? And is it still fair? Is it still something they can afford? It, it didn't seem like the language was quite defined enough. And, and it seems very important at, at the end of the day. And I believe that uh, the Wannaty Council there has great examples. So I, I mean, I think that we can get there from here. But I think we need to define that also. And, and then the same thing, uh. You, you, you talk about the twenty percent or twenty-five percent in the beginning, but. I see, not to be suspicious sometimes, that some of the developers, I mean, they will go in and do minimal amount or. Maximum benefit. Okay, you could have, you know, all kinds of. Three-bedroom penthouse apartments and all, and, and a giant structure and uh four. One-bedroom or studio units or even like the units that are over here behind Safeway where they, they share a kitchen. And a living space and they each get a studio bedroom essentially. And, and with that qualify, I mean, if we don't define all of these things pretty accurately. It, it feels like the city could be taken advantage of and, and that sort of thing. And uh, and then as far as the oversight of it, it says you'll have a nonprofit oversee this. Uh, I, I believe there's some sort of, from what her maybe assumption of then being that. That partner, which would be a likely partner, but it does, it feels like that also has to be hammered out. Is there some of, some operating, excuse me, agreement, understandings, that sort of thing with men or whoever the city proposes? With that or, you know, kind of what the logistics of that operation would be in a future context. And also, I know that someone like Mint uh puts people in housing regularly. I mean, they're kind of the natural go-to. But I don't believe there are police force for that sort of thing. So, you know, how do you then in a future context with either people began or changes? Uh, you know, organizing the policing of that. It just, however that goes, needs to be decided. And uh, and then finally, uh, on the tax exemptions. That the city is impacted and the community is impacted, but there's other taxing authorities. That will also be impacted here. And, and for me, namely the fire department and the hospital. And uh, I just didn't know, has the city reached out and got some sort of. Understanding from each of these other taxing authorities that, you know, if we go forward with this kind of project, we're willing to. Uh, you know, to donate our portion of twenty years with the taxes for that also. So anyhow, it's, I just wanted to be sure that, you know, some of these considerations and maybe I can talk to the council member in the future.
Right.
Find some of these answers.
Yeah, and these are all addressed within that, the scope of this actually and, and. As far as the other taxing di- districts, it's not a decrease for them. It's just they wouldn't see the increase, so it's not.
I agree like that, but, but it could be a large amount of, of, depending on if it's, you know, hundreds.
You know, it's interesting, yeah, it's just interesting that, well, we'll get into that when we start discussion, but let's just.
So is there, is there something, because I got sent a copy of what your proposal was, I thought, and. I didn't see these, these things that I had a question, is there like a more vast expanded version of that?
Well, these, these pieces get, well, it, in terms of affordability and all, it is defined, but. But as far as who would be the, the nonprofit and all that, that will come in as part of that process of us getting an application.
No, I, and, and I read like.
So we're not, we're not spelling all of those details out at this point. So, but. Um, let's see if there's other comments on it and then um. We'll.
Thank you.
Michael, you might reach out to Lois to answer a few of your questions. Oh, so.
Most of those things have been addressed and I just do not find.
Yeah, and the other place to check is tab eleven in the packet today.
Right.
Tab eleven in the packet today would have answered some of those questions, so thank you.
Tom Lynn. Tom. We're not hearing you. Not hearing. Sorry. Danger Tom. Um, round of control. You've, you've got an audio problem, Tom, because I don't see that you're muted, but I also don't. Hear anything, so. Um, I'm going to go ahead and close this.
Wait, you have another comment?
Oh.
Do we get a chance?
One more?
Yeah.
Oh.
Go ahead and let him go.
Tom?
He didn't raise his hand.
Okay, never mind, come up.
Good evening, my name is Mike Mark. Uh, I'm at one two six seven two Straight Street, uh, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, thanks for sharing all the information on this. And for delving into it, looking at it as long and short as you can. I am a hundred percent behind this exemption. Uh, and I would encourage you to think of yourself as builders or architects of what is happening here in the world. As an architect, you can be able to really think about plan, but building have a lot of tools to provide. Add this tool to your plans. Because if you don't use it all the time, then. It will always be applicable, but it's good to take out a lot of changes again, so please support the exemption.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you'd like to say something?
Welcome to Mario, one one eight Evan Street. Thank you for all the consideration, all the comments. Um, a lot of mention has been made about tools. This is a tool, but I believe it's the wrong tool. There's going to be other tools out there that are better suited for this. This is not the right tool for this town at this time. I am all for affordable housing, but this is not the means to which we need to go. There's better things out there, there are tools. And this community is just not the right size for this tool, so I would strongly encourage you to not. Select or not approve this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, I don't see somebody jump up or Kurt.
Thank you. Um, Kurt Hare, thirteen eighty Commercial Streets. I beg your pardon?
No, go ahead. Yeah.
Okay, Kurt Hare, thirteen eighty Commercial Street. And uh, I would encourage the council to wait. We would be the, by far the smallest community to adopt this tool. We're not certain that it works for a community this size. Um. If I read the, the income standards correctly at a hundred and fifteen percent of AMI. Uh, we would have property owners in this community. Who would be subsidizing the taxes of people who make more than they do. And uh, I have to say that I would resent being put in that position. Um, I would strongly encourage the council to wait on this and let's, let's give it some time. And look at how it works in other places. We, we don't know how it works in a community this size because no one has used it in a community this size. Uh, Leavenworth is a, a unique situation. And we don't need a cookie cutter tool. Uh, tools, yes, we do need tools, but. We don't want to hammer where we need a screwdriver. Uh, I, we, we've, we're talking about affordable housing. And this tool gives us lots of housing, but a small percentage of affordable housing. Um, I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think we need to, it's a generous. Tax exemption for the builder, the developer. And builders and developers will build in Leavenworth because it's desirable. We don't need to bring them in with more. Uh, incentives. They've got plenty of incentive to build here because it's a profitable place we're going to build. I think we need to keep looking. Thank you.
Okay, Lynn H?
Yes, I changed my names because I thought you maybe thought I was the other Lynn.
I thought you were.
So I added a, a last name initial. It's Lynn Hassel. I live at two six three Center Street. And I would like to please say that I would be against the multifamily tax exemption. And I have lots of um places for tools in my toolbox. But I also have places for my lattes, as someone mentioned. And I'd rather keep my own lattes than give them to the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Hmm. All right, thanks, Lynn. Um, anybody else real quick? We're going to wrap this up. All right, I will close the public hearing eight nineteen. On this multifamily tax exemption program. And we will go on to our next item, which is a public hearing, which is also a continuation, and this is of the bed and breakfast code amendments. And again, this is a time to state big statements to the council on your preference on this item. Um, we'll need your full name and address and to make your comments. And with that.
Mayor.
Yes.
Oh, thank you, mayor. I do want to make some clarifications on this particular one. Uh, the memorandum, the trans. Transmittal memo under tab twelve. It does note in tab, uh, bullet point number two that we struck out. A section of proposed eighteen fifty-two one twenty F. The portion struck out was this provision shall go into effect January first, twenty thirty-three. As noted in that transmittal memo, the planning commission is not in favor of extending that out. In that long, and matter of fact, they want to make that provision for expiring bed and breakfast immediate. Um, the draft that's attached to your actual ordinance. Has that one little sentence in there, so that is something. Staff, myself, will be looking for clarification from the city council. As noted in the transmittal memo. We do recommend, you know, at least one year to allow people to make that change effective, um, if not two years. And then I, I also want to point out that the uh legal review came in rather late on this one. And there are a few changes and attached to the ordinance that were done in red. That are from our legal department. And so I can walk through those if you like. Most of them are very minor or clarifications. Um, but those are in the actual ordinance center. Tab fifteen. So, in any case, I'll make you aware of those changes. I'm happy to walk through any of those if the city council has questions on it. Uh. Were you able to hear everything I said?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I would like you to walk through them.
Sure, tab fifteen. Andrea has it to um put up on the screen so everybody can see it. Under attachment A. Page one of six. Uh, the purpose, our attorney added the word the. Um, you'll see that the number two is added later in that sentence. And then on B, you'll see the word housing stock permitted within the residential zones, that's highlighted or added.
Yeah, we did it that way. I don't know. That's stupid for me.
Okay, Sharon, are you ready?
Me?
I don't, I don't want to leave you behind, you said.
Carl's got, got a copy with what you're saying, I wish I had one. She doesn't have a copy with your red.
It's under tab fifteen.
In tab what?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, we were at the wrong, she was at the wrong tab, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, now, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we did A, we did B, the bottom of B, uh, within the city is also added there. Then, as you see, Andrea scrolled down, great, thank you. Item, oh, back up Andrea, item C two, just added the word A N N. Um, and then. Okay, and then go ahead and scroll down to the next page. Um, it goes all the way to D, item three. So we're still going down, there you go. So the attorney recommended adding more information about the city business license. Eventually, the attorney would like to see the business license section as a whole move to chapter five, where business licenses are addressed. Um, but you'll see his language here, prior to issuance of a business license. An annual building fire life safety inspection shall occur unless a self-inspection provided for below is accepted by the city. Uh, further on, legal recommends business license for B and Bs shall run from. January first to December thirty-first, when issued after clearance of the annual inspection. So we do appreciate the attorney's thoughtfulness in that, because they're. Especially more recently have been concerns about that annual inspection, so that clarification helps. Um, if you can scroll down to number five, thank you. Number five, further down. Perfect, uh, so the attorney added this clarification clause as part of the annual business license renewal. And that's just, um, all combined together with the language that was previously stated there. If you want to go down to number three underneath there, oops, go back up just a little bit. There you go, stop. Um, number three under number five talks about the property owner shall have both legal responsibility for. The collection and payment of all applicable taxes and remit, remittance of collected tax. So that was a legal addition. And just a little bit further down, you'll see the red there, it says, report. The results of the self-conducted life safety inspection. Uh, that's the property owner shall do that. For acceptance by the city after the initial inspection with permitting. The property owner or designee. From that time forward shall conduct a self-inspection of their property annually for the acceptance by the city. I know, it sounds like an attorney. So, we'll do our best to make it work, right? Um, scrolling further down to item two. Uh, there's additional clarification here, in the event the property owner fails the self-inspection to provide it. Or the information supplied is incomplete or determined by the city to be unreliable. Uh, these are probably my favorite sentences that we're adding. Most of the people running the B and Bs are very straightforward, however, but if we do need it, the language is here. Uh, if you can scroll down just a smidge to O. Uh, the attorney recommended that when we're talking about the revocation of a B and B. Adding the word conditional use in front of permit, just to be extra clear. And then we get to that fun item F, uh, that I mentioned earlier, that has the extra line in it about it. About when the provision shall go into effect. Uh, the very last sentence added by the attorney is a conditional use permit may also be terminated under. And it provides another provision in our code. So, those are the changes, they're all fairly very straightforward, but I'm. Uh, happy that we were able to walk through them in detail. And with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor for public comment.
Okay. I would again take public comment from anyone wishes to speak on the matter of the ordinance on bed and breakfast.
Uh, Lil, I got a question for you.
This is a, this is public comment, not, that's, this isn't our question and answer.
Sorry, just go up there and say your name.
We're gonna insist on following the rules. Since I get slapped over there.
I'll catch up with you soon.
Yeah, sounds good. All right. I've got one hand up from Linda.
Linda Coloserto, one zero two six five Ski Hill Drive. Um, I just wanted to make a comment that the meeting minutes of my last.
You're fading in and out.
I said my meeting minutes of my last public comment were incorrect and misstated. In it, it says that I, uh, let's see, to give everyone at least a year before enacting these amendments, I am not in agreement with that. I am in agreement with expiration of the conditional use upon transfer of ownership effective immediately. Just as the planning commission. As I stated prior, uh, there's been a lot of. Uh, code changes done that have had effects on many of the residents in the past few years, and why. Why we're going to give the bed and breakfast owners, uh, pass for a year or two, I'm not sure. It just seems very inequitable, thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay, anybody else stopped in our gathering here or online? Not seen any more comments. So we will close the public hearing at eight thirty on bed and breakfast. And move to. The next item. Okay, next is our action items, and we're actually.
Eight A.
Calling out eight A, right, I, I did remember that, that's what I was.
Thanks, Carl.
So we're going to eight A and looking at, and because Dick would like to ask questions or. Comments on the management services.
Yeah, so I just want a clarification on where, where we're at with, uh, maybe either. T-Bore or Sharon can address that, since they're on the festival committee. About the cash, how, how is the festival doing, what's our income? You know, what, we're raising the rates, uh, that raised, raising the fee for, um. The folks who are running it, so how is the, I just wanted to find out how viable it is, what progress has been made, as far as income for the city through the festival.
Well, it's not making any money for the city. Yeah, the revenues are getting better since COVID, it took a beating for COVID, doesn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
So the revenue was the, the one positive is that the weekday inquiries for booking are increasing. So that is a plus, and that, that they're pushing to rent the festival more during the week for one day events or short two-day events versus. The weekends and the big weddings and the kids and years.
Okay.
Yeah, so those are, and those are the main revenue sources, so the income is getting better. Every time you rent the festival for a bigger event, there are issues that come with it. So part of the fee that for the operators, for the, for the city is. Because their fee, and one of the biggest ones is cleaning, cleaning out a festival after it gets used, and so those are issues that. I think, in my opinion, will constantly have to be addressed, because it's a big facility. Also, alcohol use, security. Do they carry a weapon, do they not carry a weapon, how much alcohol, how many people, so those type of things are run costs and they have to be recouped.
So, aren't they, aren't they passed through?
They are passed through.
Right.
Yeah, so, but those numbers become significant.
Right.
Yeah.
They're, they're part of the numbers that.
Right.
Like, yeah, but they're less.
Yeah.
Recouped from those users.
We recoup, but we don't really make a lot of money.
No.
Services, yeah, so the rental of the facility is where the money comes in, and so the weekday. During the week is what is going to hopefully close that gap. But it's, it's, it was never designed, when the festival was built, going way back, it was never designed to be a. Huge moneymaker for the city, what it was designed to do was to be, the facility be built and paid for that part of it. Through the lodging tax, and that's what the voters, the operation part of it, which falls on the city. Is the part that isn't, it's an ebb and flow ever since COVID.
Right.
Yeah.
Are they having issues with alcohol or weapons?
Sometimes, depends on, not weapons, I, I shouldn't say that they have weapons, does the security have weapons?
Okay.
So, uh, do they hire a police, do they hire private security?
Okay.
Those type of things, so, uh, anytime you rent a facility and there's a lot of people, alcohol is served. We require that the security be in place. How many and what type is determined by how many people.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's always gonna be, I wouldn't say problems, but there will always be issues.
Right.
Yeah.
I would say before COVID, we took it over, T-Bore, you recall, is it around thirteen or fourteen?
Yeah.
Thirteen point fourteen, we took it over from LCCF, who had been managing it at the time. Because there were shortfalls in funding and things were happening.
Yeah.
You know, so we took it over. And each year we had very small revenue growth, and as we built some funds, we made improvements to the facility, capital type of improvements. Um, COVID hit, we had to shut her down. But we still had comps, and you guys were going, should we sell this thing, should we just get out of this, and.
Right.
No, we just had to get through COVID, um, we started this year with fifty-three thousand in the bank. As of the end of October, we have just over a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
It's an ebb and flow, like he says, because what you're doing is you're bringing in the revenue before you actually have the event.
Right.
So you're always having the revenue first and then expending afterwards, so it's kind of a. Horse before the cart kind of thing.
Right.
But it has been doing very well for us, with the exception of the couple of years between COVID.
Yeah. Okay. And there's been, and there's been some steps put in that. Uh, that if you, if you rent the festival and you put your deposit in, and you decide, we don't want it. In certain amount of days, you don't get that money back, so that was one of the issues in the past, that, and you took this money. That you held it, and then they didn't use it and gave it like that. Those things have changed.
Good, I was on that, waiting for a while, so I know the change.
Yeah, but it's, but it's, it's, and you know, when COVID hit, you lose your big renters like Summer Theater. Which they have required to come back for twenty twenty-five, so be on the Summer Theater. Uh, they do want to come back in twenty twenty-five, so there is the potential to have a nice jump in revenue, but. It's those weekdays that will, will push that revenue growth.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I needed, just wanted to kind of figure out where that was, because I knew we were losing money and I thought it was doing better, so answering my questions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's kind of like the pool.
Yeah.
So I would entertain a motion to completely develop a company management services.
Summed up.
By, and seconded by a couple, um. I'll say it before. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. Action item thirteen is snow and ice maintenance policy, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor Ford, council members, good evening. Uh, this is finalized version of our snow and ice policy before you associated with resolution set in that twenty twenty-three. Brief history on this, uh, the previous snow and ice maintenance policy was originally drafted and. Adopted in twenty fifteen, since then, Public Works Department staff recommended a policy review earlier this year. Uh, the January tenth study session, we brought this forward, just for general discussion, and then proposed a draft policy February fourteenth. Of this year at study session, the direction from the council at the time was to explore increasing the level of service associated with sidewalk snow removal. Um, since then, we've constructed the sidewalk along Ski Hill Drive. From US two to Evan Street, so the city is going to maintain this new section of sidewalk. And we're rearranging the snow removal route on our sidewalks, we're ultimately increasing. The layel foot of sidewalks, snow removal by one thousand eighty-five feet from, from previous. So aside from increasing the level of service. On sidewalks, no removal, we just did some housekeeping updates, added some communication phasing, phases one through four. This allows us to communicate with the community which phase we're at during a storm cycle, so folks can kind of. Understand where, where Public Works is at, where, how we communicate that. Um, other than that, that's, that's the updating the maps to show, you know, a, a better visual of our routes. That's the, that's the gist of the update. And I propose the red line, which was brought forth at the last study session, is the same, I will state that I do. I apologize, I forgot to update the safe walks, the school with the new ski, ski hill drive sidewalk verbally, or excuse me, in writing, rather. It's noted in a map, but however, I just need to fix that in the actual policy, so aside from those changes, that's what's forth, for the councils. And with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Good question. How do your four phases correspond with your four priorities?
That's a good question, they're not exactly related per se, so.
And, and how would community members know what phase you're operating in, is that going to be communicated in some sort of way, or put on the website or something like that?
Likely be social media posts on the state Facebook page, but we could have, uh, we could have a. We did, we do have an intention to create, but maybe in draft form, I apologize, but I know it's not public, but the actual snow and ice maintenance. Uh, web, webpage, so perhaps we could have updates there. Um, to answer your original question also, phase one, it mentions initially opening of priority one and two routes, so it does mention what. What routes are associated with each phasing. So phases one and two are primarily focused on priority, you know, routes one and two. Phase three is associated with priority three, and then phase four is associated with priority four activities, so they are related somewhat, but I think it's primarily for communication.
Sure, I guess my question is more, you know, everybody's gonna look at this. Specific to where they live in the community and what priority listing their street is on, right, so. If the, if the city is going to be communicating, hey, we're in phase one, like. Priority one, then they're gonna know, if they're in priority one, they're gonna get hit here somewhere soon with a plow, uh, but if they're in, you know, priority two routes, they're gonna have to wait. You know, you're still, you're still in that first half of that phase, that sort of thing.
And we can identify that, we can highlight those areas on the route map. One thing to note, I mean, even during snow, again, we, we typically get. The street, every street and alley will be plowed within twenty-four hours, so that's a general practice, so these kind of priority one and two are kind of immediate responses. So we can clarify that on the, on the route map. And of course, the route map will be public.
Tom, I was gonna ask you, still your, at, on Benton Street. You mentioned that you're not gonna, no longer plow, that was it, because you said the brush was, you know, too close, you couldn't get through?
Good question, so, uh, sidewalks on Benton Street are very narrow. They're very much below current standards, so we actually have a special Bobcat that was purchased just for the Benton Street sidewalks. We use it elsewhere in town, but it's still very cumbersome, so since we've constructed sidewalk on Ski Hill Drive up to Evans. Evans Street has a much wider and better constructed sidewalk, so we're transitioning the route up to. Full of the Evans from Ski Hill all the way to US two, and we've since notified folks, we've sent letters to everyone along Benton Street to. To tell them what the expectation is for this year.
Okay.
Forward.
So there's not gonna be any, what? So there's not gonna be any whatsoever on Benton?
No, 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 no.
It's gonna be Ski Hill and over across by Evans.
Yeah, up to Evans.
All right.
Tom, on our priority four, uh, second bullet point, says a wrinkle in general cleanup of residential and business streets. Does that mean the wrinkle, the berm, uh, when it's determined? Uh, on a preferential, non-preferential basis, will you be removing the wrinkle from people's driveways, the snow berm?
So that's specific to intersections.
Okay, so that we don't have.
Wiping streets.
Okay.
Stuff like that, yeah.
So for the record, I still would like to see a program where residents could sign up for. The wrinkle or barn removed from their driveway. I, I don't, I've talked about it several times, but I don't think it's gained any traction, but for the record, I still support that.
Understood. And again, if there's a, if there's a collective. Direction from the city council, a level service, I'm happy to put together a proposal, what that would cost and take from staffing equipment for storms.
I support the concept too, even as a priority four. And set the expectation pretty low, that we'll get to it as resources. Are available, but I support the concept.
Thanks, Jason. I was thinking more like a signup list for people who may not have the resources to remove a two-foot burn from their driveway.
But the, the problem is, is if it's not a priority. People need to get out is a priority, so you don't really help them if you can't get to them until after that. Everything else is cleaned up.
Yeah, it would be, it would be priority number four.
Yeah, as needed and as time allows, like it says in the, in the thing.
Yeah, it'd be number five.
For example, so, so a, as an example, last December, our storm cycle frequencies were so close that we never got to priority four items for. A month and a half.
I understand that, yeah. And I think that was a anomaly, but it'd be great to see if we had a big storm for the city to be able to offer that service as a. Sign-up list or as an ad, as needed basis for people who don't have the resources to move that two-foot burn device.
And, and I reached out too. So my board with Rotary, he's, he's indicated that there could be a potential volunteer program. So I recently just, you know, kind of, we'd like to fire on that conversation to see where it goes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution. Number seventeen dash two twenty twenty-three, updating the city's snow and ice maintenance policy.
Second. All right. Are ready for a vote? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thanks, Tom.
Action. Fourteen is ordered sixteen eighty-two, the multi-family tax exemption program. But you've got questions of Lilith? Think we've heard a lot.
No, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, what's the, what's the strategy Lilith for having a discussion with the junior taxing districts like? Uh, Fire District Three and the hospital? What, what have our discussions been, or do we have discussions? Cause it obviously. Uh, Chief O'Brien, his letter made that pretty clear that there hadn't been one, things weren't clear to him. He certainly would like to have a discussion, have we got plans for that, or what's, what's our strategy?
Uh, you're correct. Uh, we haven't talked to the taxing districts, uh, the fire district provided comment. Um, I did, um, forward to the city council, you know. Follow up to his comments about how it impacts those districts. And essentially because the full value of the improvements isn't added to the land, that's. Primarily where the impact lies, is unseen realization. Um, of those improvements during the time of the exemption. So at the end of the exemption. Then they come fully on the tax rolls and, and the benefit is seen with all the districts. I haven't formulated, uh. A program to meet with taxing districts or talk with them. I would not be the best person to have those conversations. I would need to rely on the assessors and. Um, we certainly could do that. I will. Remind the council members that the program as it's drafted right now requires the developer to provide the feasibility. And for individual councils, as the projects come before them. To review that feasibility and make a determination. So. It seems more, most prudent to have those discussions when you actually have a project outlined before you. And have those councils make those decisions. But we certainly could reach out to them ahead of time to make them aware of the program if you do choose to adopt it. And again, once we have something on the table that we can actually get real numbers on, we could move forward with. Impact statements or, um, review of those junior taxing districts. Does that make sense, Seek?
Yeah.
Did you get, did you get her response though to?
I got inquiry.
The response that.
No, I didn't.
That, uh, Penny Burke put down and I saw Aaron fun.
No, 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 I mean, specifically. Kelly O'Brien, she had contacted the, and they would not. He was under the impression that they could be losing money and it's not a loss. It would be foregoing the increase.
If they wouldn't get.
They wouldn't get the increase of the value, but they wouldn't be losing.
Right.
But I feel like we're playing semantic football here. I think this represents a real loss of revenue for our taxing districts. What matters is that moving forward, our emergency responders will essentially, if these developments go through, will have less money. To respond to more people, they will lose their ability to capture the new construction value into their levy calculations. Moving forward, that's when those theoretical losses become real. It will be a loss to junior tax districts.
Yeah, but they'll also have an opportunity to hire people that live in town. Because they'd be able to afford housing. So. You know, it, it becomes a.
But they will be able to pay them because they won't have the money from the law, so that taxing district.
But Lilith, the biggest thing that came out of the forum last Tuesday was that the developer could come in and ask for a hundred percent exemption. And not have to build any affordable units. That's what happened in Winachi.
No, that's, that's the program, T-Bore, that is the program that the city of Winachi adopted.
That's the eight-year program, and we're not talking about.
We're not adding, but it's not, but that's what they're gonna ask for. No, but that's not.
No, they don't get it.
They don't get it just because they ask.
Need to be real careful and have this spelled out. When somebody comes in and asks for an application.
It is, it is spelled.
It's not a hundred percent spelled out because we don't know the exact numbers.
Well, we won't until they have a project that they want whichever city council to review and consider. So once they have a project outline, they fill out the application, they have to be a twelve-year rental. Or a twenty-year ownership program. And they provide that feasibility, then that individual city council can say. Does this make sense with what's going on in the rest of the community and where we're at and do we approve it?
So the eight-year program is one that just wants to get more rental units. It doesn't care about affordability. And that's what Winachi, I'm just telling you, that's what they have a question passed, and we're not passing that. So it doesn't.
Do they still get a hundred percent exemption for the total development, even if they give the twenty percent of the units?
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the physicals.
Well, they, they, if it's commercial mixed use, it doesn't include the commercial. But all the residential, say they have, you know, ten residential units. They have to provide, you know, two of those as the lower income for the twelve years. And they get the exemption on all the residential units, yes.
On the, yeah, and that's what I'm talking about, is that they can go a hundred percent of the units. So what we're doing is as a taxpayer. We're subsidizing all of it for the developer, not just affordable units.
Otherwise, you wouldn't be able to build it.
Yeah, right. The, the, the affordable units themselves wouldn't be enough incentive because the, the tax.
But is it enough incentive for us to exempt the whole project, like Clint says, down the road?
This, so again.
If it's for the community.
Right. Right, because I'm saying that, okay. If, if it were, again, we're talking theoretical, right? We gave the theoretical eight million dollars was for all of the units. That's their value. That would be ten bucks. So if it's sixteen million, it'd be twenty bucks a year. For, for the average four hundred thousand. Those are just conceptual to give a, a rough idea. But again. This body would decide when and if. A project came forward and said, we would like to use this program, here's, and they would give. The, the proposal and it's this body that decides to accept or not. It's not the developer. That gets to push what they want. It's.
Emotion that's gonna push.
Well, and, and you guys get to decide. Like we said, this is the only thing this does is give you that tool to consider.
And for having tools, I just think it needs to be refined a little bit more, but.
It gets refined when it comes, that's the point. The tool is there. But until you have a project, how do you refine something? That's still just conceptual.
Exactly.
Possibility. Well, that's, it won't ever happen until you get the tool and say. Come and bring us a project and then we can look at it. That's the only way you're gonna get. If you say, no, we're gonna wait until we get more things nailed down. You're not, just put this tool aside and just say, we don't want this tool. Because you'll never get one coming forward without the tool there to be potentially used. So if we don't. Then we don't, we just, we won't put it in our toolbox. To me, all it means is you want to get as many tools because quite frankly. What I would love to hear those that are opposing this. Come with some tools. Don't sit there and say, this is no good for us, this is a bad tool for us. Come with some tools because we desperately need housing for a workforce. And it's easy to say no. It's difficult to come up with tools. So come up with some tools. I've got an open door. I'll meet with anybody anytime that wants to talk workforce housing. But don't just tell me what won't work. Come to me with some tools that we can use to make something happen for this community, or again, just kiss the community goodbye. Because it's gonna be the millionaires who are gonna live here and that's it. So, come up with some tools. I'm, I'm open, I'm all ears. But all we're doing is asking to consider putting this tool in the toolbox. And then if somebody takes it out and says, I wanna use this tool, then you guys get to decide whether or not it makes sense.
Are we in discussion now, or should we put a motion on the table and then we can discuss? Cause I feel like we're full on in discussion.
Yeah.
We're discussing.
Okay, let's do a metaphorical switch for a second here. So, let's go from tools to healthcare. So, I feel like. We're dealing with a condition here and we have to make sure that the prescription that we are. Prescribing properly addresses the condition we're treating. Not only that, but we have to be comfortable with the side effects. Of the medication as well. For me. Tax obligation numbers for our junior taxing districts gives me heartburn. And to know that our junior taxing districts, our fire district and our hospital. And others will have to use less to serve more. The real public safety issues that could arise from that give me a heart attack. And I'm not comfortable with it. The tax obligation numbers from Winachi, regardless on how that's gonna be put into play. Because I know it'll be put into play different here, the real numbers of what people from Winachi are, are paying. They concern me. And when you're saying come up with something different, we just heard something tonight that literally had everyone in the crowd bursting into applause. I've never seen that before up here on this dice. I think that there are other options available and to say. We have to choose this less palatable option because, well, we don't see any other options out there. Again. We need the right prescription for the condition. I'm not convinced that this is it there. And, and the other element. That I'm concerned about is when we're talking about. Best for the most and the political capital that we are expending up here. I think it's a mistake. As I think some are doing to cast all who are against this as straight up nimbies. I've heard from seniors, I've heard from those on fixed incomes. I've heard from those who are professionals, but house poor. That are on a real budget, that are concerned about this and concerned about the questions about this. I'm looking at playing frankly, the long game. On this, and by that I mean, do we really wanna burn a ton of political capital with many of our constituents on this vote? So that when there's a, so there's a major trust deficit. With our community when other perhaps more palatable options present themselves. I have real heartburn about this. And it's not because I've got mine. It's because I want the best for the most.
And that's a decision that can be made when there's a proposal to come forward. There may be a proposal that comes forward with four units and there's one affordable unit. It's a small, small, we're talking. Pennies that hit spread versus dollars. I'm just saying. It doesn't mean, this is not about using that tool today. This is about saying, we can consider it. And however it makes, and it may not make sense. And it may be that it. But it gives us the option.
Unless we're willing to build in the limited definition of scope into this tool, I'm not comfortable with applying it in a broad scope. And on the flip side of what Zach and Mike said, we haven't really done due diligence speaking to these taxing districts. Have we done due diligence speaking to the taxpayers? Is there a statistically relevant survey again? Of our taxpayers saying, yeah, we like this, we don't. We have a vibrant group of people who came to speak about it. I'd like to hear from the other sixteen hundred and know, what, what do you guys think about this? Cause I haven't seen any surveys go out to say, this is a big deal. It's potentially impacting us for a long time. We haven't spoken to the junior taxing districts, but I'd like to hear more about what everyone else thinks, cause. I can call this a governing body, but really what, what am I doing? I'm representing them.
It seems like you don't understand the concept of the tool. It's not having access to the tool.
All right.
If I understand.
We're. We're just talking up here right now, so.
And I'm, I'm in support of the tool, don't get me wrong. I think we do need a bigger toolbox. I would also like to hear what the climate of the taxpayers is before we make that kind of decision. Cause again, we haven't found the climate of the junior taxing districts, but I think the tool is great. I've. Nothing against a bunch of tools, and I don't really even see it having a massive impact right now, but it will come.
And that's the thing is that, you know, again. If, if you say you're for the tool and then, I mean, all of those questions get answered if the tool. Is proposed to even be used. That's when those questions get answered.
You're arguing.
No, I'm, I'm.
I don't, I think, when I make a comment, I don't want you recommenting to my comment. That's not fair. You've already said that several times tonight. So if anybody that seems to not be in favor of it. You're shooting your comments back at them. At least that's how I see.
Saying he's, he's saying he's for having a tool and that's what I'm saying. That's what this is. That's all we're doing tonight. Is giving that tool. That's it. This isn't about spending anybody's tax dollars. It's about the potential. Of it if somebody came forward. Right now, we don't have anybody. I mean, Widener was. We had rushed this, if you remember, we were asked to rush this through to get the potential out to grab a. Potential user. That's not, that's not even in the works right now. That's not. What's, what's before us, because that's, that's not something they're interested in.
What we needed prior to Biden was an inclusionary policy.
Well, and that was happening because that had a longer process to it, and so we jumped on this one. With your guys'. If you recall, you guys took this out of the, the other. Process and said, let's, let's fast track this. So that's what, why we're here. But all this, again, it's, it's all about putting a tool in there, but if you don't wanna do it, you're not comfortable doing it. It's, it's your guys' call, but that's all this is.
I'm, I'm happy with the tool. I just think the process could have been a little more due diligence. I really appreciate all the information Lilith gave us, everyone who came in. I just wanted to see more, more. Information from the taxing districts and the taxpayers in terms of their acceptance of it, instead of just a small group of people.
So if we don't have anybody knocking on the door, what's the rush?
Well, we've been playing that game for forty years. But but I I would throw out there, you know, there's no harm. The minimum requirement is four units, if you wanna put a maximum requirement of, you know. Ten or a hundred or fifty, whatever number, you know, you want to put as a maximum that could be proposed. That's one option. Each individual's council moving forward still gets the opportunity to decide if it fits, there's still a feasibility. And once we have a proposal in hand, then we'll have something tangible to talk to. The taxing districts about and it's a council action, so the public as a whole can review those and comment on. The actual one as well. So, in any case, there's an option to amend it tonight.
I've been really struggling with this for weeks. Um, I've had a lot of incredible conversations with lots of community members about this topic. Many of them have been for the program and many have been against. Uh, it's been, it's been pretty split with the P, the community members that I've spoken about. Some of the things that I'm on the fence about are um, some of the just unknowns within this program. On how this is going to play out taxation wise. One of the things that I would like to remind the council about just in general is for the last couple of years. At our retreats, the thing that pops up as a number one priority of this council is housing. Is to figure out ways to create housing opportunities within our community. And that's not just one type of house, that's as many housing types. Sizes, shapes, lot sizes as possible so that we can best serve our community. That is of many different income levels, work opportunities, financial straits. So we we need tools because we are a very old community. With a lot of single family homes that are a hundred years old. So we're very, very used to a very specific type of housing. But that doesn't work for how incredibly diverse we are becoming as a community. And the various different layers of uh, of work and finances that are representative in our community. And so we can't just keep doing what we're doing and expecting different results. I don't think that this program is perfect, I I don't know how it's gonna play out because we don't, we don't have. A specific project that's being applied to just plug in and get all of the perfect answers. But we have crunched a lot of really good numbers, we've gotten incredible information and data from the assessor's office. And we have some really good information to go for, to go with, to say, hey, this could work for us or hey, this this won't work for us. But we need tools and by adopting this, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to approve a program, a. A project that comes through this program, but it gives us the opportunity to plug something very specific in. Crunch the numbers and decide whether or not it's a good opportunity for our community. It gives us another tool to create potential housing opportunities for people. And under the twelve and twenty year program, it will give us. Low income rentals or low income houses and we don't have anything else in our toolbox right now that is creating that. We really don't. We don't have to say yes to something that applies under this program, but if we don't have the program, we're never gonna have the opportunity to review that.
That's true.
We really aren't. So I don't see a downside to adopting this program and giving us the chance to review something to be submitted. And then look at the actual numbers when that happens. Because this doesn't say we have to approve it when it comes in, it just gives us the opportunity to look at it.
I would have definitely noted voted no for this uh, if there wasn't that backstop in city council making decisions project by project. I think there's too many uncertainties, there's too many hypotheticals. Um, I know there's a lot of fear around this, I mean, I've heard the fear in people's voices about, oh my god, what's gonna happen if. If this gets approved, you know, all of a sudden there's gonna be this huge development like that's going on at Meadowlark right now and it's gonna be out of our control. Our taxes are gonna go hundreds of dollars, people are gonna be on hospital beds next to the hospital, you know, houses are gonna be burning down. I think that we have to put some of that fear aside, I mean. I think some of that fear is that we are growing very fast, whether we like it or not. And we aren't gonna stop that. I mean, just look at the huge developments that have happened in the last five years that are being built right now, like I think that's uncomfortable for us. Um, this is one of those things, I, the tool analogy's been overused. I don't even wanna say the word tool for the next couple of weeks, but. But really, there's a lot of control built into this, this isn't, we pass a motion and then the floodgates open to development. So I really can be comfortable with, I'm leaving, T-Bore's leaving, Marco's leaving. But I have a lot of comfort with the next set of people sitting up here to make very thoughtful decisions about the next. If this is adopted, about the proposal that comes forward, cause we don't make decisions without a lot of thought. With a lot of community input with our planning commission and so. I know for a fact that if it's next year and five years, there's a proposal put forward. If it's approved, it's gonna be extremely thoughtful, so I can get comfortable with this because. It doesn't approve a development, I'm not approving a development that I don't know about, I'm approving. An opportunity for us to steer development in the direction that where we want to go and we don't have those tools now. Oh, I said it, man. But also I wanna reflect on the last couple of years, um, Anne mentioned housing's been our number one priority. We've agreed on that across the board, which is a really wonderful thing. Um, arguably, we've not made a lot of progress in that department. And every time the planning commission recommends something to us or a hired consultant with these expertise, they recommend something to us. We struggle with it, we hear a lot of pushback, it gets uncomfortable, you know, and so we also have to like look at those. Biases that we show up here with too and it's really hard to not take every one of your comments. You know, the seven yeses, the nine nos, and that was just tonight, not to mention all the emails, so it's really hard to take those differing viewpoints. Into account, but I'm all for it, um. I don't think there's gonna be any ground broken anytime soon and if there is, I think it's gonna be something that is gonna be really well thought through. Thank you.
Well, I would say that initially I heard this program. I was against it because uh, the idea of giving developers more money, that more of a break. Uh, just seemed to me like, I'm not, I'm not going there because there's no way they're not making money, it's just no way they're not. And obviously look around town, they're making plenty of money, especially, you know, so. But then I I started looking at this as possibly a a beachhead to get something done. Uh, this is, I'm starting my second term, so I've already been through four years. And to get something done is. Think of, it'd be worthwhile to get a, you know, if they can build it and. These can be established, we'll have. Something on the blocks. What I struggle with is that, cause I've gone back and forth, then there was four, now, now I'm struggling with, what I'm struggling with is. We go with this, I I want um, certainly some communication with the junior tax district so they understand it. I understand how this works, we don't have the information until we get an offer. But, so that's one thing that that's absolutely essential for me, that the junior tact districts or the other t- hospital and the fire department. Are well aware of how this works. I certainly believe we need another public discussion on this because that one was great, we need another one. Uh, cause I think that's how some we got, we made some, made a movement toward understanding it, even though there was a lot of folks who. Were in favor of, at least they got a cleaner understanding. And the other thing I struggle with is that we're talking about creating a workforce, possible workforce housing for people who work here. So that, because the downtown owners are gonna carry the majority of this tax burden because their properties are worth more. But the way this thing works is we can't designate that they work here, they can work in Wenatchee. They can live here and so that means, you know, one thing I struggle with is, we're gonna be. Be paying property taxes um, for a developer. And uh, the people who live there don't help us with our workforce, our workforce housing here. So that's, you know, that's all part of that, working that through. So that's, it isn't quite the answer that people have made it out to be that this will help us with the downtown situation or the workforce housing here. Cause we can't, they can still live here, get this break, we pay developers' taxes and the people work someplace else. Cause there's, you know, so I'm still, that's kinda where I'm at, but I'm hearing, I'm hearing that, you know. Uh, there's kind of a trust issue here that if we adopt this, just means we're gonna take a look at it and we have to trust, trust. This council to have all those considerations I mentioned so that. Community is still engaged and that that they still have a role to play and we're being transparent with them. And cause they are gonna have a tax increase. They are gonna have a ta, we are gonna have a tax increase and it's gonna get compounded every, you know. It's it's gonna increase every year, it's not gonna just stay at ten bucks, it's not gonna be two lattes, folks, it's not gonna be that. So that's a consideration and so. But I I kinda looked at it like, maybe this is something we need, the option of at least getting something started. And having some, and having the control we need, cause this has got to be not a program where. We, where the, where the developer wants to put in a, people with a hundred and fifteen percent income. Council has to decide it's gonna be eighty percent people who really need this thing, not to where he can get more money out of, so.
Right now, that's the way it's written, it's for low income only.
Right, well.
Eighty percent or lower.
Right, that, I didn't quite get that clear, it was like, it could be eighty to a hundred and fifteen.
No, the way that the code is written right now is just for.
Eighty only? Okay, good, cause that's, that's something.
Eighty percent or lower.
Okay, so anyway.
Allows you to go up higher, right.
So.
The state does.
That's, that's, I just think we need another public discussion and I think, but I, but I'm looking at maybe. Making it an option would be a viable first step.
So, let me just clarify that, I mean, I I see the need for a public discussion. Once there's something that came forward to discuss. I don't see, I mean, we've, we've discussed and gone over as much as we can before there's something more concrete to discuss.
Right.
So I think that public discussion will happen, is just like with, like what Jason was saying with the council that would. Have to decide. What what that process is gonna be when and if something came forward with, here's what we wanna do, we've got. Forty units, you know, that we wanna build whatever. But I don't, I don't know what, if if you pass this. There's nothing really left to discuss until.
Right.
Something comes forward.
Well, that's what I'm saying basically is, we pass this, there needs to be straight communication with the junior tax districts.
Yeah.
And there has to be straight communication and another option for public discussion, like we had to workshop. Not just, not just questions asked, what, cause that was very valuable and I wish the whole, you know, we had five council people. Three here, two on screen, we needed everybody here on that one and including you mayor, that that, that was too important. Uh, not to be here and I realize people have commitments, I get that, but that was a big deal, that was a big deal.
So. If I can mention just one more thing, I appreciate all your comments, I appreciate everyone's comments, um. And I appreciate seeking, taking special notice when this happens to really reach out to the junior taxing districts because there are a lot of variables to this. But one given that will not change is that if we do choose to pass. A project should have come here, come before us. The given is that we will be asking your junior taxing districts to serve more people with less money. And I'm not com, that full stop. And that's just where I'm at, other people may find that a palatable give and take, I.
Guess I haven't said anything yet. When I first heard about this at a study session, I believe it was about a year ago, when the um. Assessor came up, I can't think of her name right now, um, she's still in the. Yeah, wait, yeah, Walters. I said, without an opt out, I will never. Vote for anyone to pay one penny of anyone else's taxes and that has not changed today. I've heard, this is the first night I've heard anybody in favor of it. Anywhere in any conversation, any letters that have come to the um, the council. This is the first time I've I've heard that, so it was interesting to hear, you know, the reasons that people would opt in. I am not comfortable and I think it's invasive for us to reach in to anybody else's pocket, to another taxpayer's pocket. And burden them with any kind of a cost. There's no guarantee of anything here, there's no guarantee of how high the costs can go. I said at the um, forum that if we send a letter out to everybody in Wenatchee. And told them they were paying a multifamily tax, you know, in prop, in their property taxes, they would have no clue. Because there's too many people that know nothing about this in the city of Leavenworth, let alone Wenatchee. Or East Wenatchee, I can't remember if East Wenatchee has anything or not, but people don't know. When you get your property taxes, it'll say fire department, hospital, all these lines, it won't say multifamily tax exemption. It comes out of your property taxes and unless you know you're paying it, you don't know you're paying it. And um, I just made a lot of notes while I was hearing things and I really don't want any comments after I talk from you. Mister Mayor, um, well, then I'll talk over the top of you, I'm serious, I don't, I, if what I say, I say. I don't think anybody needs to jump on top of that, you, no. You said that, you said what you wanna said several times after, I think each person talked and I find it offensive. Um, uh. I'm, uh, let me see some of the notes I I wrote here, if we should do this and vote it through, we can't take it back. And I think that the property tax people in the city of Leavenworth that don't know about this, which is probably most everyone. Uh, will not be very happy and will be very disappointed that we went ahead with something. That is coming out of their pockets, how little that might be. Um, when I don't work for the city, I'm not a city council men, m- member anymore. And I don't work for the city pool, I will be somebody that can qualify for one of these houses. And I have my my house though and that's all taken care of, but I would be somebody who could, who could um, apply for. Um, one of these houses and so. The 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 amount of money that the people are making that are, uh, you know, can get into these houses. Is much more than I make now, even with that. And so I would be somebody who's paying someone else's property taxes when possibly I could hardly pay my own. And um, I just think that um, it's not a good idea at this time. If, as many people have told me they don't want this, had told me they do, I might look at it differently, that's not the case. That's, I think, what, seven people tonight spoke um, in favor of it. And that, like I said, that's the first time I heard, I don't think anybody at the public forum. Um, said they were in favor of it, I'm trying to remember if they did, there was maybe one or two people. And it was a good forum, Aaron did a great job coming up from the assessor's office and giving us a lot of information so we could. Do our best to understand this, cause this stuff isn't easy, um, if you don't do this and. And R C Ws and all these things, if you don't do this, uh, then it's, it's harder to follow. So um, I am kind of like I was maybe when I first heard of this, without an opt out. I um, do not support it at all and then that's the name of that too. No comments for me.
Well, you know what, there, there is, I will, I'm sorry, I'll take the.
Then I'll.
I just wanna ask, you realize that there is a low income senior tax exemption that you can apply for. To lower your property taxes?
Yes, I am aware of that.
And that is a tax redistribution.
For bonds.
That's a tax, it's a tax redistribution. We are a society that helps each other out.
We don't have to pay for bonds, school bonds, you know, you don't have to pay for bonds, that's it. And that's a lot. And that's a lot. That's a lot. But it's not everything.
Just saying that the.
The old doors you are.
Pick, we, we, we pick up. That. That tax gets spread out, um. And that's fine, I'm willing to do that. Um. Any other comments, questions? I think we should just at least put it to a vote.
Need a motion vote.
I know, I'm just saying, I want to call.
Sorry.
Think we should put it to a vote, so I would. Ask somebody to make a motion.
Has everybody read exhibit A?
Yeah.
Okay. Just checking. Cause it's part of the resolution.
Some of you saying you'd be willing to consider it as a tool, come on.
Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance sixteen eighty-two multifamily tax exemption program.
I'll second it. By Zeke, seconded by Jason. Any other? Discussion? Hearing none, then we'll call for the question. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Got four. All those opposed? And we've got three. The three are. Aaron and Clint and T-Bore. Voted against, the other four were for. And it passes. Let's go on to action item number fifteen, ordinance sixteen eighty-three on bed breakfast.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, I'd like to remind.
Yeah.
And I'd like to remind you that we had a question. On this particular one related to when it might be. Implemented as recommended by the planning commission, it would go into effect immediately. Um, and I would make that correct, a correction in the ordinance if you pass it, um. Under the current, uh. Motion in your packet. But staff would like to hear from you if you'd like to provide that. Um. Grace period before making it effective.
Any feedback to her on that?
I like the one year.
One year?
Yeah. So keep, put it in a desk number, make it just be. A year.
Yeah.
One year for what?
Before that, uh, before the.
For the expiration date?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it gives them one year to sell their property and have this not apply, is that what you're saying?
That it wouldn't apply, that they could sell it as a bed and breakfast. For a year.
That's, that's correct, Dan.
Yeah.
Now it's ten years.
Or the, the, right. The planning commission had recommended now.
Planning commission wanted to strike that whole thing.
Oh.
They wanted to strike it completely.
Why would we not make it effective immediately? What's the staff thinking?
Uh. There are a lot of people that make financial decisions and long-term planning related to. Managing their house and their bed and breakfast, um, I, I think it is.
Exhibit A.
But, but it doesn't keep you from operating.
Yeah, no.
It just means that you don't get to keep your conditional use permit if you ever sell your house.
I know. I.
Yeah, but if you need to sell it, if you, you've planned on that being a higher price sale because of the commercial activity. It get, it does give you one year to go ahead and make that change.
The irony doesn't escape me when we hear people say they don't wanna add a burden to somebody or make financial decisions on behalf of. Their constituents, but then you make decisions like this that actually do affect people.
Yeah.
I mean, you might not think it does, but when you invest a lot of money into something with one set of rules and then the rules change.
Yeah.
You're actually affecting people's bottom line, but.
Especially when you make.
Keep that. Keep your thinking consistent when it comes to how you financially affect people through rulemaking.
So. Anyway, if it is a concern, even six months would at least provide some time, but. Uh, a year seemed like. A relatively short period of time in the sense of government.
Well. I hear goes back. I heard, so I listened to the planning commission's arguments and I certainly agreed with them that they, I mean. We wanna turn this, um. What? If they can sell it as a. Cause we're gonna save for one year, they can still sell it as a business, right? So that, that property value is gonna be much higher because of, it's, it's a bed and breakfast, it's a commercial business. Right?
That's correct.
Okay. So how does that help us? With our game plan for affordable housing? We raise the value of the houses.
It doesn't.
It doesn't. It gives the existing property owners an opportunity to. To. To realize what they may or may not have wanted to do. It also forces their hand, if that's what they were planning, then they're gonna have to sell it right away. I mean, and selling a property with, you know, within a year. Especially with the current rates is not gonna be as easy a task either, so. But any case. That was the.
Sorry, if they don't get the rental. Sorry, if they don't get the bed and breakfast permit, then it automatically becomes a rental or just an accessory dwelling, right?
Yeah.
Could add, it could add to the, to the housing stock.
So Lilith, if this gets adopted, how close are we to four percent at this point? We're not very close, are we?
We're actually pretty darn close, because we've permitted so many this year. We've had a lot of people jump in, so we did four at the last hearing and they were approved. Uh, we've done, I believe, seven this year. Um, when I say we've been.
Total, it's based on total housing stock within the city limits, correct?
Right, so it'll always continue to increase. The last time I did the numbers, uh, we, we're at about thirty-four potential. Bed and breakfast, and I think right now we're at twenty. Um, twenty-six. Not all of them are operating yet, some of them have approval and they're just working their way through the conditions.
So because we're not at this potential threshold of four percent. The expiration date is less important, because these people could just apply for a conditional use permit when they bought the property.
That's a true, that is true. And, and, and I hadn't really thought of it that way, but you're spot on.
So, yeah, the expiration date really only matters if we're already at our threshold when we adopt this, but because we're not. People can just apply for that conditional use permit if they bought the property, so this expiration date.
Yeah, if one goes away and, and they're applying, I mean, this doesn't even increase the number if it's an operating one.
Right.
Right, yeah, and, and the other thing is, um, a lot of buyers are very leery of conditional use permits. Um, and it is a longer process to go through. So it, it will have an impact, but you're right, I hadn't, I hadn't put those pieces together the way you did, Ann. So it may be less of an impact than I think, but I still think there is an impact there.
I don't have heartburn over six months or a year for an expiration date. I don't think that it's really necessary, but I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it either, because it does, it's not really gonna affect anything.
I don't quite understand, Ann, what's the, what's the opposite of the, what does the? Conditional use applying for a. A conditional use permit do that, you know?
What's that?
What's the significance of? That they, you said they could apply for a conditional use permit?
Cause we still have capacity up to that four percent, so people could still apply for a B and B.
Yeah, so the expiration date is less impactful if this all gets adopted tonight, because. We're not at that four percent threshold within the community yet.
It sounds like it will be pretty.
But we, we, we could be by the end of the year.
So if your expiration permit expired with the sale, that new owner could apply for a conditional use permit and get a B and B anyways.
Yeah, even if they don't have a accessory dwelling.
But it also gives Jason, like if he sells a little bit of. Lot to recoup someone's investment.
True.
That year, so.
Hmm.
Yep. You're not going anywhere, right?
No, I'm not saying. So do we have consensus of what we want to build in or not, in that? Waiting or not waiting? Because that's, that seems to be the sticking point right now.
That is a sticking point for me.
How about one year?
I'm a good at one year, I think one year. What do you think, Jason?
I don't really understand if we're given, if we set the cap at four percent, what differences it make? If people can sell their home with that, it just means that you're not gonna get new. Conditional use permits and new B and Bs.
Right.
Right?
Right, so.
It, it ultimately means that, it ultimately means like. Somebody who has a conditional use permit for a B and B and they wanna sell their house within the next year. They're potentially gonna get a higher value because their conditional use permit is already there versus. Having to go through that process and getting it themselves.
Yeah, or waiting for the housing.
And going for the percentage. And, and paying that, that fees and waiting and going through that process versus. Inheriting it.
So the whole time. Both housing, not, not, not thinking about the landowner with the B and B, but thinking about housing stock. I don't, guess I don't understand that how that's gonna benefit or detract from. Potential units.
What do you mean?
Cause we have the four percent cap, that's static, that's set.
It is, but it's based on the total number of homes within the city limits and. The percentage stays the same.
I get that, I get that, I get that, I understand that.
Yeah, the advantage with removing the bed and breakfast is that the total assessed value of that home at the time of the sale right now is high. Because it includes the commercial, and the assessors did confirm for me that. Whether it's a three-bedroom, four-bedroom house or a four-bedroom B and B, they don't look at them differently. So that B and B is. Being used as a baseline for the assessors of what a four-bedroom cost in the city.
Regardless of how it's used.
Regardless of how it's used, and that's why the planning commission, oh. A big reason why the planning commission wanted to make this expiration effective. Because. That affects the tax base and the resale ability and the overall cost of housing.
What percent lower is it usually between residential and B and B? Like if it was a long-term rental versus a B and B? Is there a ballpark?
Oh, it's.
But it sounds like for the way they assess it, it's the same.
Overall residential assessment.
Well, they assess it, and again, it's based off on that. The overall sale, so if it drives out the overall sell, sales, right, then it factors in to what a four-bedroom would.
So this expiration actually potentially increase the sale. Of homes with B and Bs and actually have the opposite effect. As what you want, because if the home doesn't sell, the assessed value stays the same. Right, right.
Assess value is based off of sales that have occurred.
Right.
So as those B and Bs now will no longer apply as a commercial property. If everything else stays the same, the assessed value should go down.
Should go down. Um, that's all.
Cause the sales value is gonna be less. We have a four-bedroom downtown from, uh, on Commercial Street, they want one point two million. It's a very old B and B, required to be owner occupied. There, there's no, I mean, our prices are high, but they're not that high, especially for the older housing stock. Um, so you know, this home without the B and B would be substantially less, probably. Seven to eight hundred thousand, and I think I'm being fairly generous there. But any case, four hundred thousand dollar sale value is quite a bit different.
Yeah, yeah.
Any case, so I heard one, one year maybe might be considered, so.
No, I'm gonna stick with the. Um, I'm sticking with the planning commission.
Okay.
I'm a year. I think a year is fine.
Year.
A good idea. Here's gotta be zero.
So you can both know. I'll say, I would entertain a motion, somebody wanted me.
Well, I, I wanna know what, what the. We're, we don't have a direction yet.
Well, no.
The language.
Well, you're, you've got a difference of opinion, so you, you're gonna, but I heard a majority was saying they'd go for a year.
I haven't heard what Shannon wants to say.
Well, is it the? I'm turning to Kabbal, I'm so upset about the other. Ask me a question again.
Where to go?
Um, do you want the B and Bs to expire immediately when a property sales, sells, or do you want to wait? Have it, have there be a, a waiting period in a year, once we adopt this?
Immediately.
Immediately?
Okay.
I'm a year.
Year, year.
Year.
Year, okay.
See, so, I'm, that's why I said, let's, I'm entertaining a motion, because we're not gonna get.
But the motion's for the resolution and we need a direction on that language.
Yeah, we need the amendment included in the motion, so I can, um, what, what specifically, how should we phrase that, one year, when the?
Just add that in as a, as would take effect in one year where that says.
Expirations.
Expiration.
Yeah, let it shot, uh, the Leavenworth City, I'm sorry, the Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance one, six, eight, three, bed and breakfast code amendments. Amending the code so that, um. Uh, upon sale of the property, they have one year, um. One year, um, for the conditional use permit to stay in effect.
B and B would say they have, whoever bought it would have it as a B and B for a year.
Without having to reapply.
They have a year to sell it with that conditional use permit.
Yeah.
And if they sell it after that year, that conditional use permit would be.
And if they do sell it for, within a year, then whoever takes it, has a condition, and then when they sell it, there's another year.
Should we rephrase it?
Then they sell.
No, 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 no.
So I want, that, that's what.
Immediately after that.
After that first year, that makes sense.
That's actually not true either, so.
Uh-oh.
So all of, what we're actually discussing is. This will be in effect a year after we adopt it. It's not a year after someone sells their house.
Right.
Right.
It, it's not multiple sales and everybody gets a year, it's, it's a year after this code goes into.
After the code.
That's what they're saying, that we got one year that, and then this would kick into effect, that it would be upon say.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me rephrase.
So what you're, what you're doing is you're, you're making an amendment to page four of six F, expiration of conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Right now, it says provision shall go into effect January one, twenty thirty-three. Yeah, I would recommend you just say, make it go into effect January first, twenty twenty-five, which would be a year.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I'm gonna re, I'm gonna rephrase that then.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance one, six, eight, three, bed and breakfast. Code amendments, um, amending the, uh, the initiation date or the effective date to January first, twenty twenty-five.
For expirations.
For the expiration of conditional use permits.
Expiration of conditional use permits.
Excellent.
I'll move, and. T-Bore seconded. Okay, I'm assuming we had enough discussion for one day. All, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Six, and opposed? One. Okay. And it was just the, that opposed. Action item sixteen, ordinance sixteen eighty-four, adopting our ad lorm tax in. Chantel. Oh.
Lilith, did you?
No, I, I'm past due, I've, but I wanted to thank everybody. I know that was a really hard meeting, it's a lot to go over, so. Lot of, uh. Thoughts from a lot of people and I appreciate you all taking the time to do that. We'll do our best to respect the intent and, uh, everybody's feelings on both sides moving forward with that program. And thank you for the B and B discussions. Have a good night.
All right.
Good, Lilith.
Day sixteen.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Council, uh, this is your property tax ad lorm annual process that you are. Required to submit to the assessor's office by the end of this month. We did have our public hearing on this three weeks ago, October twenty-fourth. What is before you tonight for your consideration is to take the one percent. Tax which is included within ordinance sixteen eighty-four. That one percent is equivalent to seven thousand eighty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Also included in this, which you don't have to include in the ordinance, but you do get it, and we've talked a lot tonight about what all goes into the property tax. So I won't lay this too much, uh, thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-seven eighty-five is for new construction. We have zero for annexation and six hundred and one dollars and thirty-three cents for refunded revenue. If you do take the one percent tax. You will have a total. Preliminary taxable collection of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I would just note that that is about ten percent of your general fund budget. The property tax is not one of our largest revenue streams for the general fund. And you do have a lot of programs within your general fund. On average, our expenditures run between three and five percent increase. On average, our expenditures run between three and five percent increase. Entertain any questions if you have them on the first motion, which is to adopt the ordinance itself. With the one percent tax increase.
Questions? Would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance sixteen eighty four with the ad lorum tax increase of seven thousand. Eighty eight dollars and fifty one cents, which is an increase of one percent from the previous year.
Okay, moved by Jason, seconded by Ann. All those in favor, let me see your hands. It passes unanimously, there's a second portion.
So the second item before you is authorizing the mayor to sign the tax levy. I will note that the number uh included on the document itself is higher than the seven twenty nine, seven six nine that I just spoke of. It is seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, this is purposeful. Because at this point, the taxes are preliminary by the assessor, so there could be some minor modifications. And so by putting that higher number, it allows the assessor to. Collect up to your maximum one percent, whatever that true number is, once they finalize.
Entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to authorize the mayor to sign the tax levy certificate, second.
Okay, moved by Zee, seconded by Marco. Alright, all is in favor, let me see your hands. Passing unanimously, no, did you pay? No.
You're not. I, I, what is it?
You're not voting, okay.
No, cause I don't really understand it and um, Lilith's note, or not Lilith. Chantel knows and she's tried to get it through my head.
Favor, one exception.
It was the same on the other vote.
Okay. Um, we'll move on to the side of seven two. Bobby?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, actually, before I get into this item, I'm going to introduce the council to the newest member of the Leavenworth team. Um, this is Kara Raftery Zupki. She is our new communications and special projects manager. She comes to us from Pacific Engineering in Wenatchee. Um, and I just visit the city council.
What was her last name again, Sophie?
Raftery.
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 And then in parentheses, her maiden name, Zupki.
What?
Zupki.
Zupity. I was just here, I think.
So um, Kara's our, like I said, we're a communications person, she'll be the person who um, is behind our. Our Facebook, our emails, our weekly um, Sunday, hey, hear what's going on this week. Um, she's been, uh, she's been a great addition so far and she's proven herself well worth. Higher, um, and she was competitive to get.
Yeah, you're only a chance to negotiate your salary at the beginning.
The true task will be when she edits her first mayor's letter.
That wasn't part of the interview process?
It was, there's a four part assessment.
She had to do, she had to do a previous one, now she's got to do a real one.
Your middle name Grammarly?
Thank you so much, I'm so excited to be here.
Well, it's like that, yeah, still coming.
And another little side note is that she comes from the firm that my son is part owner of.
Which son? Oh, Micah, Micah.
That specific.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you, Kara.
Thanks, Kara. See ya, cool.
Alright, Council Mayor, um, thank you uh, for you tonight. For your approval is a uh, updated building and maintenance agreement with North Central Libraries. As you know, they. Occupy space in City Hall for zero dollars in rent, but they do pay a s- uh, small fee for uh, maintenance. Um, in this agreement, it's very similar to the last one, but it did reduce the amount of um, of square footage that they are reimbursing us for. Uh, that was because there's some areas that they identified that were on their plan, they're paying for that they don't actually use. Um, that's the old sheriff's storage area and then back staircase. Um, the uh, the lease, the maintenance agreement does allow us to charge them for use of city council chambers. Should, should we choose to charge them and should they choose to use city council chambers? Um, and it's, it's got the same increase uh, every three years of twenty five cents per square foot that the last agreement had. Uh, I believe it's the same agreement that they've sent around to all their different municipal partners. Um, and that is the presentation.
Any questions?
Is that pretty standard for elaborate and not pay rent in a city building?
In. My experience, no. But I believe this is what's always happened with NCW libraries, this is their model.
Yeah.
So they don't pay for any of their libraries, Cashmere.
Right.
And Cashmere's library is. So who's paying for that?
But they're not really profitable.
Their staff and all of that.
But.
But they won't pay for the. Right, and who does?
So like the uh, there's a brand new beautiful library in. One hundred percent by donations to the tune of twelve million dollars.
There wasn't a levy for that.
City wasn't involved.
Wow.
City said, here's the land, the friends of the library raised a twelve million dollars, built the thing, and now NCW libraries occupies it for. A maintenance agreement.
Oh. Got some movie stars living up there or what?
I think they did a really good fundraising up in Winter, I don't know who was there, but.
Wonder how long it took them.
We could do a pool, I know we can.
Just have to bust them.
You can't swim in book.
Okay, I would entertain a motion. Keep this.
Ball game moving.
Yeah.
Number one?
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign. North Central Regional Library Building and Maintenance Agreement. Second.
Moved by T one, seconded by Marco. All in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously.
It was half a hand.
Actually, approval of Village of Light Traffic Pedestrian Plan and Funding, Tom.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I'll make this brief fact. You're just gonna focus your attention to the, to the chart.
Okay.
Um, so basically the ask from city council is the same amount as previous years, and that's to. Basically allocate a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars to fund the Village of Lights Christmas Town. Festival support and that could stay control sheriff's office, DOT, and our traffic control. Contracts, and if you look at the chart, excuse me, yeah.
Our costs are decreasing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great.
Yes.
This is attributed to the fact that we were paying prevailing wage for traffic control contractors, and this is not a prevailing wage project. It's not, it's not a public work. So we do not have to pay the wage, so that's the, please save forty thousand a year.
This is a lot money, right? I mean lodging tax.
It is lodging tax.
Since the cost continues to go down. Is it still your recommendation that we authorize a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars?
Yes, here's why. So we just had um, our second Village of Lights planning meeting. And we may be expanding traffic control services to, this is again contingent upon. Uh, Schley County Public Works approval and continued work through emergency management, the sheriff's office, but we're North Road, I just to be very clear, this is not. finalized by any means, but they're going to consider North Road being closed to local traffic and emergency traffic only during the three Saturdays of both lights. If that's the case, we'll need more support from traffic control. So my recommendation is to keep the hundred thirty five thousand, just do the unknowns of that piece of rounds.
Yeah.
Got it.
They're already budgeting.
Yeah, hmm, cause it backs up, I've already been up there back North Road back.
Well, then you get two backed up.
Right.
Versus leaving one open for that emergency vehicle.
And when the emergency vehicle gets to town.
Interim solutions we're exploring for this year is one to have a tow truck contracted. In town, so we basically pay a tow company that we have a contract currently for, they just stage in town to be able to tow cars that are double parked. And and thirdly, putting the North Road in discussion, uh, the sheriff's office, if they have additional resources, they're gonna, they're gonna place. Patrols in the residential area to prevent the double parking. It's last year, what everyone knows, parking due to the snow. But we got a lot of very, very narrow streets.
Yeah.
So it kind of get a good condition to travel.
Yeah, and this is for. Which uh, what's the date?
Was the three.
All three weekends? Sat, just sat Friday and Saturday?
Well, the Saturday would be the majority of.
So it's just gonna be the second, ninth, and sixteenth, but we are gonna have the pedestrian protection plan placed for four weeks of December. But what has the additional?
But these traffic controls are only on Saturdays. Not Fridays. Leavenworth City Council moves to authorize. A not to exceed expenditure of a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars to provide traffic control and a just. Additional public safety officers for the twenty twenty three Village of Lights Christmas Town event.
Second.
We brought it, yeah, seconded by.
It's a mouthful.
All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passing unanimously.
Is that a full hand, Sharon?
No, we were just wondering, was it a full one?
It was a full.
Okay, we've got a couple of change orders, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so Ski Hill Sidewalks Amendment Change Order one, first of all, Councilor Reister, thank you for reaching out ahead of time. Sure gave that very much. Uh, Councilor Reister had some really good questions, which I will get to in a moment. Uh, so change order one is associated specifically, not just specifically, but it's associated primarily with the curb ramp that we installed at. Evan Street and Ski Hill Drive, it's a little bit of history, so we redid Ski Hill Drive, I believe in twenty thirteen. I believe when Ski Hill Drive was done, and the curb ramp that was installed at that intersection was. Perhaps at the time ADA compliant, but it was not ADA compliant anymore, so we had Smith by change order uh, install a copper. Pedestrian curb ramp at that location, so it's currently ADA, so it meets ADA standards. We had to acquire some right of way in order to make that happen, so we acquired the right of way back in August, so we already had the right of way secured. So this change order. Align share of it is associated with that pedestrian curb ramp, but some of it, we added twelve bicycle lane stencils along the. Um, the corridor, that was an oversight design, so that was an additional expenditure tied to this, and also. Expediting the shipping for the truncated domes to technical warning services, that was an additional seventeen hundred dollar cost. So I agree that this is. Uh, Councilor Reister, you're correct, the thirty two thousand, it should give you pause, it is expensive. I will note that concrete prices are really high. Um, I did pull some bid caps from Wenatchee. And their pedestrian, their parallel curb ramps were, and this is a larger project too, three hundred and thirty dollars a square yard. I compared to our Ski Hill project, two hundred and forty eight dollars a square yard, so. And and when we paid for this, it was not just a negotiated lump sum price, we actually just extended bid quantities that were tied to the base bid. The nice thing is, cause we didn't pay this as a standalone, we didn't have to pay mobilization. So despite the thirty two thousand dollar price tag, I believe that we did get the best. Cost.
Possible, yeah. Yeah, and they had a, they're pretty big uh curb implementing machine, their machine to actually put in the cement curbs.
Yeah, the subcontractor, yeah.
Who is the private property? That we had to buy.
That's a good question, Councilor Waters, I can't remember. Ferguson was the last name. It was the southeast corner of Ski Hill and Evan Street, so.
I'm not able to picture it right now. Is that one of those yellow things? That we just scoop up with them when we plow the snow?
Oh, you mean the curb.
Yeah, but these are cast iron, they're very expensive, but the reason why we went with cast iron is the plows don't.
Yeah, yeah.
The fiberglass ones do break.
Okay.
So these are cap, these are fast in place, cast iron.
Cool.
For the place right there, so they're not.
Will do damage to our.
Thanks, Tom, I just, I took a look at that and I saw twenty feet of curb, thirty two thousand dollars, and I just thought.
Is it Pat Songer's property?
So.
No, it was. No, Ferguson was the last name.
Oh, Jacqueline Ferguson.
Yes, yes, thank you. And it was just a piece of bravo, it wasn't a whole parcel.
Well, I'm on a corner, you can buy some right away.
The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorizes the mayor to execute change order number one associated with Ski Hill Drive Sidewalk Improvements Project. In the amount of thirty two thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and forty eight cents.
Moved by Ann, I heard Zee first, sorry, Sharon.
I'm gonna find this spot, so I can do it.
Okay.
There it is, I'll get the next one.
Let me see your hand. Passes unanimously, here we go to number two, get ready.
Number two, associated with Ski Hill Drive, this is related to water work, so we wanted to get ahead and and start implementing our integrated. Capital Improvement Program, ICID, and one way to be, and and this is also supportive of the shift of being more. Proactive and reactive and public work, so we went ahead and replaced all the service lines and installed them underneath a new sidewalk. So in the future, we didn't have to tear up new sidewalks, install water service lines. But lo and behold, a lot of them were. Not as easy as anticipated, and the setter, the meter base setters, they were not to standard, they were all. Previously old, referred to as go, so they're just basically bent copper tubes in place and a meter was spanned in between. So we had the contractor replace all those with proper meter centers, so. As a result, also there's some utility constraints, they had to reroute a number of service lines, we incurred an additional. Uh, forty thousand dollars in just service line work on this project. And I want to draw attention to the exhibits of that twenty. There's an incorrect amount on the change order, the motion is correct, but the, but that will change or a cover sheet did not include sales tax, which it should. We have since obtained the. The the proper cover sheet, and so the motion is correct. It's one bring in.
Alright, but eight point five percent.
Yeah, utilities, utility work is subject to reassessment.
Okay.
Hey.
This is your chat, Sharon.
Do you wanna make the motion?
Um, cause it's.
It's number twenty.
I do, thank you. The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorizes the mayor to execute change order number two. Associated with the Ski Hill Drive Sidewalk Improvements Project in the amount of forty thousand, six hundred and two dollars and fifty six cents.
Third, moved by Sharon, seconded by Jason, all those in favor, let me see your hands, passes unanimously. Professional Services Agreement, RH two.
Thank you, Mayor, again, uh, this is the Services During Construction Agreement associated with our emergency Pine Street Water Main Replacement Project. Um, on the consent agenda, we had the the design services contract, and this. For approval is the Services During Construction Contract, it is a higher amount than the original uh, initial design contract, this has thirty five thousand. Three hundred and eighty seven dollar fee associated with it. I will state the original agreement, we had services during instruction built into it. However, due to having a contractor that we were not familiar with, we went ahead and bolstered this to have required full time inspection from RH two engineering. Just due to the uncertainty with having a contractor we don't have an established relationship with. Um, it has paid off the dividends, especially with the outreach with folks, because we had to do a pretty widespread water outage on this project. And RH two was able to help us go door to door and prepare, there was a single point of contact even for some of the residents, so it's been nice. Um, Councilor Reister, you also pointed out on this, you just questioned, but rightly so, you were just questioning the the costs associated with this. I do want to point out that overall, due to this being an emergency project, RH two was able to expedite the design because. It's a lot of the permitting and geotechnical investigation that we did not do. So industry standard is a purpose twenty five percent for design services, that's design and services during construction. Right now, we're just under nineteen percent, so we're still floating below what we normally would have paid had this been a planned project. So from a, from a monetary cost standpoint, I feel, I feel good in terms of. What we're starting.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorizes the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one. To the Professional Services Agreement with RH two Engineering Incorporated for the Pine Street Phase Two Water Main Replacement Project. Increasing the not to exceed amount to sixty five thousand, three hundred and eighty seven.
Seconded by Sharon.
Right, I will state that.
Majority of this, uh, almost all of this project is going to be covered by that four hundred thousand dollar emergency loan.
And a small grant, right?
And a small grant.
Alright, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously, we're getting close, folks, loan agreement. Tom.
Yes, lastly.
So not lastly.
Oh, we're associating loans. Thank you. Uh so this just formalizes the Public Works Board, the Emergency Construction Agreement. So a little bit of history, Andy, I presented the board. On October nineteenth, and we subsequently were awarded a three hundred and forty thousand dollar low interest loan, one point three four percent. And a sixty thousand dollar grant from the Washington State Public Club for the emergency. Uh Waterman Replacement Project, as noted in the write-up, approximately forty-seven hundred dollars from the city's water fund is anticipated to require. To be required to cover the full project cost. So again, very much line shares covering the housing funds. So this just formalizes the the loan agreement of the Public Works Board. And I apologize, the motion is very lengthy that uh. Congress just recommended.
You know when a lawyer's gotten involved by the way. The boys, boys. Come on, boys.
The Leaver City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the Public Works Board Emergency Funding Contract for the Pine Street Water Main Replacement. Titus Road to First Street Project in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. Authorizes the acceptance of the funds when tendered from the Public Works Board. Authorizes payment out of the net revenue of the city water fund and directs any relevant budget amendments as required.
Second.
Move by Clint, seconded by Ann. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Was a deep breath. Passed unanimously. Second item.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, now this is the last one. So a little bit of context here. So the bipartisan infrastructure law is. So there we are unprecedented times with infrastructure funding. So the State Department of Health Drinking Water State Revolving Fund typically has. Five to ten million dollars available for low interest loans, but because of the bipartisan infrastructure law, there's upwards to a hundred and fifty million dollars available. So Andy is uh this is tenacious as she is, she is what she is. She's going after um pursuing some of these available funds. In order to apply for state. The drinking water state revolving funds, we have to have city council approval. So this this action allows us to apply for the fund for the funds, which the applications are due at the end of November. I did sit down with Chantel and Selby to evaluate debt service moving forward with the water fund. We do have a lot of competing projects. So despite approval tonight, we are still continuing to do due diligence. This just gives us more time to evaluate and apply for the for the funding. As of right now, we could apply for this and obtain the funding and before the debt service payments, fine, but we have, you know, we have large projects, for example, the Ice Cold Road Transmission May. We, once we get more true cost estimate there, we need to fit this in to our basically debt evaluation water fund. But that makes sense. This. This package of products, projects include the Cedar Street Loop Completion. So we have a dead end line on Cedar Street. This would complete that gap. We have a deficient water main on Stafford Street. This would replace it, a one and inch and a half water main with an eight inch stuckle iron. I guess inch and a half. It's likely corroded down an inch or less.
Talk about a bottleneck.
And last, lastly, the Commercial Street Main Replacement, Division Street, Fourteenth Street. So all in total, this is about a one point seven million dollar loan package we're going to apply for. It's a twenty-year loan, a interest rate of two point two five percent. And again, it's competitive, so we have to apply. And again, we're still going to do diligence.
So Commercial Street will go from six inch to eight inch?
Us, Commercial Street's going to go from six to twelve.
Twelve. Okay.
Stafford will go to eight. And this is a tool. What's that? This is a tool.
So. That one actually, that that one's one of the original seven of the downtown master plan that never was able to get completed.
I see it.
And I would assume that if you're replacing the lines, that that street would get done.
Yes, the street would be low hanging fruit. That's that's a toll must back is the water main, like commercial.
Okay.
The Leaver City Council moves to approve and authorize the city staff, Tom Walkholder, Andy Zontak, Backstrom. Matthew Selby and or Chantel Steiner to submit the Department of Health Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Construction Loan Application for the Water Distribution Capacity Improvements and Loop Completion Project with a total loan request of one million six hundred and fifty-one. Thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Second. Moved by Jason, seconded by Sharon. Any other questions? All in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All reports are all written and will be.
Thank you for a four hundred page packet.
Yeah.
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 Oh, my goodness.
Really.
Don't do that again.
Generous, very generous.
Something to look forward to, Shane.
We did it all for you.
He's still awake.
You haven't been sworn in yet. You can take this over. Right now, he's doing the swearing. Um. So we will move on to, we're going to have an executive. Huh?
Fifteen.
Yes, no, I know that.
Okay.
Um, we're going to have an executive session of R C W forty-two thirty-one ten one one pending litigation. It'll be fifteen minutes with possible action to follow. Four.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Un, seconded by Keyboard.
Thanks for coming, you guys.
You're not gonna hate that one. All those in favor? I I. We'll start that ten, and we'll start it. Come out.
Did we vote to do it? I've got, I had to. Oh, I had to vote on my calendar. Do we vote?
Actually, we are gonna vote. Yeah.
We are gonna vote. We got a motion.
We have to do that out of here.
Yes.
We're out of the executive session and. Motion is Selby's. Um um what we've got is a motion to approve the settlement agreement with ecology and to authorize the mayor to sign. Um. And that's what the motion.
So move. Second.
Moved by. Jason and seconded by Marco.
Actually, I think Clint.
Or Clint, okay. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously. I take.
I'm going to adjourn.
How did you know I was gonna ask? I gotta drive over the path.
Tonight?
Yeah, my wife's got surgery tomorrow.
Be careful.
Yeah, I know. Watch for deer. What was that?
Thank you. If the city clerk could send me a sign.